Buenas tardes a todos. Bienvenidos a la reunión de septiembre 20, con la ciudadanía del consejo, incluyendo la Junta de Librería y Observatorio, la Junta de Autoridades de Hacienda, y la ciudadanía representando al Consejo de Desarrollo Sucesor. Es martes por la tarde, casi una hora. Soy Richard Kite, y estoy contento de tenerlos aquí hoy para una reunión muy emocionante. Si quisieran, por favor, se pongan ahora y unen al consejero Ted Wild y al juramento de nuestra bandera.
Unirme y jurar mi lealtad a la bandera de Estados Unidos y a la red de paz de Estados Unidos.
Bueno, para aquellos que no han visto las pantallas antes, ¿qué opinan?[68.48][68.48](Risas y aplausos) Es afortunado que aplaudan porque no podemos bajarlos, así que... apreciamos que estén aquí hoy, y gracias Ted por hacer el juramento. Sí, ahora vamos a hacer una llamada de rol. Kristi.
Claro, señor presidente. El consejero Hobart.
Aquí.
Consejero Townsend.
Aquí.
Consejero Wild.
Aquí.
Señor Protem Smotrich.
Y señor Kite.
Aquí, gracias. Está bien, Charlie, tenemos un invitado de vuestros aquí hoy para una presentación especial.
Lo hacemos, lo hacemos. Gracias, Richard, y me gustaría presentarlo, si puedo. Como miembro de la comunidad de los sin hogar de la CIVAG, tengo un interés particular en trabajar para abordar este problema que nos afecta a todos. Y así también la ciudad de Rancho Mirage. Rancho Mirage ha mucho tiempo apoyado el esfuerzo para resolver la ausencia de hogar en nuestro valle. Además de los muchos grandes non-profits locales que Rancho Mirage apoya, la ciudad proporciona asistencia financiera directa al Ministerio de la Vida y su modelo de Hacienda Primera para proporcionar prevención de la ausencia de hogar y diversidad en servicio. Este modelo ya ha estado en efecto durante un año. Estoy feliz de presentar al director del Ministerio de la Vida de la ciudad de Rancho Mirage, Kristi McEwen. Que venga y nos provea de una actualización sobre el Hacienda Primera del Valle de Cochela. Hola, Kristi.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Bienvenido.
Muchas gracias por invitarnos aquí hoy. Si pudieramos obtener el PowerPoint. Y... Así que vamos a hacer un curso de crash en resolución de la ausencia de hogar, y solo cuidaremos de todos los problemas del mundo en unos cinco minutos. ¿Todos están conmigo?
Sí.
De hecho, es un problema complejo y diverso, y el Valle de Cochela y la ciudad de Rancho Mirage en particular han estado a la frente de técnicas realmente innovadoras y interesantes que no son nuevas para la nación, pero definitivamente nuevas para nuestra región. Y son acercadas a datos y estudiadas, probadas. Y uno de ellos que están escuchando mucho en los últimos años se llama Housing First. El concepto, como ven antes, es que llamamos a un modelo antiguo, el modelo transicional, fue programas a largo plazo que la gente necesitaba pasar de la ausencia de hogar. Y lo que los estudios encontraron fue que fue una intervención muy cara y que muchas personas no lograron debido al ciclo de ausencia de hogar, porque caían de la cuna, no podían cumplir con las reglas, severa enfermedad mental, adicción, esos desafíos. Y esos tipos terminaban de volver a la calle. Y creó una subcomunidad de personas que experimentaban ausencia de hogar llamada ausencia crónica. Así que el enfoque que toma Housing First es que queremos ir adelante y curar la ausencia de hogar. Y la única cura de la ausencia de hogar es la vivienda. No hay otra cura. Ningún programa cura la ausencia de hogar. Ningún hogar cura la ausencia de hogar. La vivienda, una alquiler en tu propio nombre, poder alquilar y pagar tu alquiler cada mes cura la ausencia de hogar. Y eso es el concepto. Y a nuestro shock, funciona espectacularmente bien a una tasa que es tres veces más alta que los modelos transicionales y de vivienda. Esto es nacional, pero también, como aprenderéis más tarde a través de algunos reportes independientes, está funcionando justo aquí en vuestra comunidad. Así que eso es solo noticia emocionante. Así que por los números, soy una persona impulsada por los datos. Siempre voy a darles los números, pero también quiero tomar un momento para darse cuenta de que cada persona o cada número en la pantalla es una persona. Es una persona que has visto, es una persona que has herido y tal vez que has tratado de involucrar. Y así son las personas en nuestra comunidad, en Rancho Mirage y en el Valle de Cochela que han sido servidas debido a su colaboración con el Hacienda Primera del Valle de Cochela. Así que por los números, 91 permanentemente alojados. ¿Qué significa permanentemente alojado realmente? Significa una alquiler en su propio nombre. Significa que tienen la capacidad de pagar el alquiler. A menudo eso va a ser subsidizado, y si eso parece como, oh, no sé si quiero pagar el alquiler para alguien más. Solo una nota rápida es que ignorar la ausencia de hogar es la intervención más cara. Costa aproximadamente cuatro veces más ignorar a alguien en la calle debido a su acceso a la policía, a los servicios de emergencia, al departamento de emergencia, a todo, a ser tomado, a ser procesado a través de las cárceles, a los salones de emergencia nuevamente, y luego, ya sabes, a los 51-50 de emergencia. Muy caro para la comunidad y para los fondos de impuestos donde la vivienda permanente es por mucho la intervención más accesible y realmente termina esa situación de ausencia de hogar. Y luego ves las diversiones de cunas. Eso es donde estamos tratando de reconectar a la gente, a la familia que estamos buscando. ¿Cuál es ese pequeño, esa pequeña cantidad de asistencia que va a sacarte de esta situación? Y luego proporcionar asistencia al alquiler. Esto fue prevención de la ausencia de hogar, que hay una gran necesidad en el Valle de Cochela. Tenemos un trabajo de temporada. Tenemos horas y, ya sabes, dos y tres trabajos parciales. Y así esa prevención de la ausencia de hogar realmente ayudó a tantas familias en esta comunidad a poder hacerlo ese mes extra hasta que sus horas se levanten o hasta que pudieran conseguir otro trabajo. Y eso fue instrumental en mantener a la gente alojada y evitando cualquier situación de ausencia de hogar. Y luego esos servicios leverados, así que el camino de la vida. Estamos en la comunidad, somos countywide, y traemos a Rancho Mirage y al Valle de Cochela todos nuestros otros contratos que podemos servir a tus constituyentes también. Así que somos financiados por HUD, somos financiados por el estado, somos financiados por el county, ciudades específicas. Así que estos son esos recursos leverados. También tenemos una salud de comportamiento, salud de comportamiento móvil. Ellos entran en las calles y hacen ese cálculo uno a uno, esa documentación, ayudan a la gente a conectarse a sus medicamentos. Así que eso sucede en la esquina de la calle. Y luego también el apoyo de la empleo porque realmente no puedes pagar el alquiler sin un trabajo. Pero Housing First es acerca de tratar de conseguir a alguien primero en la vivienda y luego traer ese apoyo y los recursos después para que no vincule a nadie en las calles cuando podrían ser exitosamente alojados. Y luego en cuanto a la expansión del programa, somos los jefes de estos contratos. Y así vinimos a la comunidad y dijimos, ¿qué necesitas más? Vinimos a cada ciudad y dijimos, ¿qué te gustaría ver más? Y ellos dijeron, realmente queremos algunos zapatos en el suelo. Y pensamos, ¿sabes qué? Si ustedes tienen a alguien para llamar, un supermercado, y obtendrán la línea de atención en sólo un rato. Tienen a alguien para llamar cuando alguien entra a la ciudadánía y podemos responder y podemos traer esos recursos. Eso es un valor enorme, y nos saca de esa mentalidad de silo de darle a alguien otro número, darle a alguien otro número. No, queremos que llamen un número y vamos a traer esos recursos. Así que ese es un aspecto de la equipo de difusión. Y luego los fondos especiales de necesidades. Encontramos que hay necesidades únicas que van a terminar la situación de ausencia de hogar que los fondos federales típicos simplemente no pagan. Y así cuando estábamos ayudando a eliminar un encapamento, había un señor que acaba de necesitar un empuje. Acaba de necesitar un empuje para su camión para que pudiera obtener más horas. Y luego otro que necesitaba poder pagar el depósito para el parámetro porque tenía el motor, tenía el hogar móvil en los sands, en los dunas, y sabía que podía conseguir un parámetro, ya sabes, para pararlo y tener un dirección. Así que ese pensamiento avanzado, esa flexibilidad es realmente importante. Y luego el dinero adicional de vivienda, depósitos de asistencia a utilidades, esos tipos de cosas. Y van mucho. Y así, como mencioné anteriormente, hacemos... soy impulsada por los datos, y queremos asegurarnos de que somos los mejores jefes de los fondos y también que lo que intentamos llegar a la fruición tiene. Había, a través de la CIVAG y el comité, que el consejero Townsend es parte integral, pidieron una auditoría independiente a través de Hark, quien es increíblemente y altamente respetado auditor y especializa en el Valle de Cochela. Y el informe de Hark está siendo liberado, creo, hoy. Así que ustedes están viendo un poco los escenarios. Fui humillada y emocionada de ver que, mucho más allá del promedio nacional y más allá de algunos de los otros programas que estábamos comparando, no solo con la closura de Roy's, sino mirando más como una comparación de naranjas a naranjas, pero también algunos comparaciones de naranjas a naranjas en cuanto a otros programas, resultados excepcionales. Y cuando digo resultados, quiero decir personas que ya no están en las calles porque tienen una puerta frontal con una dirección y un baño que pueden limpiar. Porque ese es el objetivo. Así que realmente, estoy realmente esperando cuando ese informe sea liberado. Y así, ¿a quién estamos ayudando? Mi cliente mayor tenía 94 años. Él y su esposa de 86 años han sido exitosamente alojados. Son veteranos y estaban viviendo en su automóvil. Somos justo al 51% femenino, 56% hispano, y 65 ausentes por más de 12 meses, que si también están desactivados, cae en esa categoría de ausencia crónica. Así que hay una necesidad profunda en nuestra comunidad. Y lo que es afortunado es que para la ausencia crónica, esa ausencia a largo plazo, Housing First ha convertido en modelo y ha demostrado que funciona. Realmente ayudamos y alojamos a la persona que golpea el cielo. Así que celebraciones, nuevamente, solo para volvernos a... Para cada estad, para cada porcentaje, son personas y tienen nombres. Y esto fue una reunión. Tenemos algunos oficinas colocado en el valle, y así fue uno de ellos que están viendo en la foto. Pero las historias son increíbles. Sí, ves como en el tercer bullet, dice, con el parque RV. Este era un señor que acabamos de ayudar porque tenía el RV. Solo necesitaba un lugar para pararlo ilegalmente y poder acceder a esos servicios y instalaciones. Y así hay tantas intervenciones realmente poderosas ocurriendo muchas veces durante el día. Y así es esa línea de atención de un supermercado. Le pido que por favor llame, que por favor haga preguntas. Pasenlo a amigos, y estamos trabajando para llevar esto aún más a la comunidad. Pero recibimos bastantes llamadas y es un recurso bastante poderoso. Estoy feliz de tomar cualquier pregunta en este momento, y te agradezco.
Gracias, Kristi. Tengo una pregunta. ¿Por qué no nos compartís cuándo termina el programa, el contrato? ¿Cuándo va a terminar? ¿Junio?
El final del contrato. Así que está en un plazo de extensione, pero hay la oportunidad de reconsiderarlo. Así que estamos en nuestro segundo año hasta junio.
Gracias. ¿Eso será votado?
Perdón.
¿Será votado por la CIVAG?
Sí.
Está bien. ¿Sabemos cuándo?
En realidad, deferiré a la CIVAG para responder a eso. Fue como, simplemente nos aplicamos.[782.56][782.56](Risas)
Está bien.
Así que gracias por eso.
Gracias, Chris.
¿Tiene?
Sí. Su formato, usted necesitaba algo sobre intervenciones de calle. ¿Podría describirnos qué es una intervención de calle y cómo determinar la exitabilidad al lidiar con lo que supongo que son personas que están viviendo en la calle?
Absolutamente. Muchas gracias por su pregunta. El éxito para mí es la vivienda. Ahora, sé que a veces eso tomará múltiples compromisos para construir ese confianza y moverse hacia ese objetivo. Tenemos equipos que responden a las llamadas en la línea de atención. Si hay un hotspot específico o una persona que busca esa intervención. Y luego también tenemos equipos que dibujan áreas particulares donde conocemos a la gente. Típicamente, vamos a caminar a alguien y vamos a preguntar, hey, tenemos este bolsillo de recursos. ¿Conoces a alguien que es ausente? Porque no queremos decir, hey, eres ausente, déjame ayudarte. Y ellos dicen, yo soy ausente. Y nosotros decimos, oh, ¿dónde están durmiendo ahora? Déjanos saber. Y eso también nos ayuda a ver dónde más empezar a involucrar porque nuestra comunidad ausente es mucho más informada de cada recurso y cada otra persona en necesidad que más la mayoría de la gente. Y así comenzamos a construir esas relaciones. Afortunadamente, los teléfonos celulares tienen, ya sabes, teléfonos celulares pagos. Todos han llegado a la mayoría de la comunidad aquí. Así que somos capaces de texto y tener esas comunicaciones. Comenzamos a traer a alguien al DMV, a la Seguridad Social. Vamos a tratar de conseguir cualquier problema de pago, asegurarnos de estar conectado a esos beneficios principales. Pero al mismo tiempo, concurren, realmente comenzamos a trabajar hacia cómo podemos conseguirlo. ¿Cuál es la mejor intervención de vivienda?
¿Tiene una estimación del número, el número físico de personas que viven en la calle desde, digamos, Palm Springs a India o Cochela?
No me gusta hablar de forma contundente, pero creo que el último punto en el tiempo habría puesto alrededor de 700. Así que para el Valle de Cochela.
¿Y cuánto fue ese tiempo?
El 20 de enero.
Gracias.
¿Algunos otros preguntas? Bueno, gracias por estar.
Muchas gracias por su tiempo.
Gracias, Kristi.
Está bien, el próximo orador es Jill Oviette. Ella es la oficina de información pública para el Distrito de Control de Mosquitos y Vector. Jill, es genial tenerte aquí.
Muchas gracias por recibirme aquí hoy. Y si pudieran traer el PowerPoint. Lo que voy a estar hablando de hoy es la emergencia y la detección de un especie invasiva de mosquitos en Rancho Mirage a partir de 28 de agosto. Por qué es importante, por qué deberíamos preocuparnos por ello, y qué podemos hacer para deshacerse de este mosquito, que es perjudicial para nuestra comunidad. Así que, en primer lugar, ¿qué es un mosquito invasivo? Es un mosquito que no es nativo de nuestra área. Es un mosquito que ha sido introducido de allá. Se detectó por primera vez en California en 2011, y lo hemos detectado aquí en el Valle de Cochela desde 2016. Esa primera ciudad fue la ciudad de Cochela. Desde entonces, hemos ido por todo el valle de Rancho Mirage, que se mantuvo por un tiempo. Pero a partir de 28 de agosto detectamos el mosquito aquí, y eso nos lleva a ocho ciudades ahora. Ocho de las nueve, y también lo tenemos en Meca. Así que en lugar de los mosquitos urbanos, los mosquitos nativos urbanos que tenemos aquí en el Valle de Cochela, este mosquito se mordería durante el día, en lugar de nuestros mosquitos nativos urbanos que se mueren a la mañana y a la noche. Así que eso significa que si estás fuera durante el día jugando golf o haciendo otras cosas, este mosquito es un mordero del día. Es muy agresivo, come a la gente, prefiere a la gente que a los pájaros, lo cual es diferente de los otros mosquitos nativos del valle. Son pequeños, son blancos y blancos, y pegan huevos en container extremadamente pequeños. Noté que todos tienen botellas de agua en su escritorio. Si miras ese pequeño tapete de la botella, si tiene agua en él, el mosquito invasivo de 80 puede en realidad criarse en algo tan pequeño como eso. Y el PowerPoint desapareció allí. Así que puedes ver dónde está que lo tenemos en el Valle de Cochela ahora. Todas esas ciudades, todas las ciudades que se ha detectado excepto Desert Hot Springs. Así que en 28 de agosto recibimos una llamada de gente que se queja de mosquitos morderos. Fuimos a investigar y detectamos 80 en Rancho Mirage. Ahora hemos publicado, probablemente la mayoría de ustedes lo hayan oído hasta ahora, avisos de entrada. Fuimos de entrada y publicamos avisos para dejar a la gente saber que íbamos a ir de entrada y buscando este mosquito, tratando de conseguirlo bajo control antes de que terminaras teniendolo por todo el Valle de Rancho Mirage. Puedes ver aquí el mapa que he puesto ahí. Los áreas circulantes son las áreas donde hemos detectado el mosquito. Así que desde la primera detección hemos hecho extrañas atrapaciones y ido de entrada a entrada. Y podrás verlo ahí. Es entre, al norte de Gerald Ford, entre Plumley, Dynashore, Deval Drive, y luego a la sur, sería Los Almos, Rode, Tamarés y Deval. Así que hemos hecho hasta ahora 21 inspecciones de entrada a entrada. Esas inspecciones continúan hasta que descubramos cuántos de ellos encontramos. Hasta ahora han sido dos larvas, ocho adultos y un par de pupis. Así que ¿qué significa esto para los residentes de Rancho Mirage? ¿Por qué nos importa esto? Bueno, el mosquito 80 es capaz de transmitir virus serios como Dengue, Chikungunya, virus Zika, que recibió mucho interés hace un par de años. Y estos son virus que no están siendo transmitidos actualmente en el estado de California por mosquitos. Pero todo lo que tomará es un viajero que vuelva de donde tienen estas enfermedades, que está infectado, que regresa y luego es atado por ahora, lo que se ha convertido en un mosquito local aquí. Y luego va de persona a mosquito, mosquito a persona. Y podríamos ver desastres como vimos en Florida y otros lugares de cosas como Dengue, virus Zika, y chikungunya. Enfermedades serias que realmente no queremos transmitir aquí en el valle. Así que lo que realmente esperamos hacer es tratar de mantener estas poblaciones de mosquitos bajos para que podamos mantener el riesgo de transmisión local bajo. Estos son los tipos de atrapajes que estamos usando para atrapar estos mosquitos. Son nacionalmente, ya sabes, el tipo de oro de los atrapajes para este tipo de mosquito. Así que incorporamos diferentes atrapajes. En sus bolsas que les di, verás el atrapaje. Así que si recibes llamadas y alguien dice, hay algo raro por fuera de mi casa, ya sabes, sabrás que es solo un atrapaje de mosquito. Así que lo que, cómo, qué pueden hacer las ciudades y los residentes para ayudar es básicamente prevenir esos habitats de mosquitos. Como mencioné, pueden criarse en la cantidad más pequeña de agua. Así que es tan importante que todos eliminen este, ya sabes, cualquier tipo de contenedores de agua que podría recoger agua de su propiedad. Solo, solo elimínalo. Si no lo necesitas, elimínalo. Si quieres mantener baños de pájaros y cosas así que tienen, ya sabes, agua en él, solo necesitas limpiar el interior de ese baño de pájaros una vez por semana. Despejar ese agua, limpiarlo. Tenemos un anuncio para ello que puedo enviarles un enlace más tarde. Es un poco pegajoso, y es acerca de simplemente deshacerse de ese agua, limpiarlo y luego podrías rellenarlo de nuevo para que estés eliminando esas fuentes. Y luego la educación pública. Estamos haciendo mucha educación pública, pero cualquier cosa que puedan hacer para ayudarnos a hacer el mensaje va a ser muy, muy útil en mantener el riesgo de enfermedad bajo, pero también nuestra calidad de vida. Solo que no queremos ir fuera durante el día cuando hay buen tiempo aquí y ser atado por mosquitos todo el día. Si has estado en Florida, en Carolina del Sur, tienen piscinas filtradas, piscinas filtradas. No queremos eso aquí. Queremos disfrutar de nuestra manera de vida de California sur. Así que ayúdenos a mantenerlo así. Y estaré feliz de tomar cualquier pregunta.
No puedo creer que durante el día, no creo que nadie se diera cuenta de que podemos ser atados por un mosquito durante el día. Eso es increíble.
Absolutamente, y para lugares como Palm Springs y Cochela donde han tenido bastantes números de estos mosquitos que luego hemos ido y hecho aplicaciones para tratar de reducirlos, estamos recibiendo llamadas todos los días de esas personas diciendo, es terrible. Acabo de entrar a mi patio, me estoy atando, me estoy atando. Es como vivir en el estado de Estados Unidos sur, y no queremos eso aquí.
No lo queremos.[1322.58][1322.58](Risas) Exacto, así que por favor ayúdenos, sí.
¿Algunos otros preguntas?
Jill, gracias por estar aquí hoy.
Muchas gracias, y espero trabajar con el gerente de la ciudad y con sus otros departamentos para tratar de hacer lo que podemos para deshacerse de este mosquito.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Está bien, ahora pasaremos a los comentarios no agenda. Y esta es una oportunidad para cualquiera en la audiencia para hablar de un tema que no está en el agenda de hoy. Y están limitados a tres minutos, así que si llenaron una tarjeta, nuestro fiscal de la ciudad llamará su nombre. Pueden venir y dar su nombre y ciudad de residencia. Kristi.
Gracias, señor presidente. Y solo quería anunciar que tenemos un nuevo timer. Así que el tiempo es, se dan tres minutos. Cuando se suban al podium, el micrófono estará ya encendido y podrán ver el reloj. Así que cuando tengan un minuto restante, el timer se volverá azul y luego cuando su tiempo termina, se volverá rojo. Tenemos dos oradores, y el primero es, la primera tarjeta es Janice Lyle y Michelle Gallagher de Sunnylands.
Buenas tardes. Quería invitar a todos a volver a Sunnylands. Acabamos de abrir para nuestra octava temporada. 540,000 personas visitaron el centro y jardines en nuestros primeros siete años. Y pasamos el verano refrescando tanto la experiencia que ofrecemos como la interpretación que la gente tendrá una vez que estén en el centro. Y así tratamos de cambiar nuestra historia un poco. Agregamos algunos nuances que encontramos de la investigación arquivada. Y también queríamos hablar un poco más sobre retiros. Pero probablemente lo que será más emocionante, voy a pasar el micrófono a McLean, quien fue la curadora de nuestra nueva exhibición de pájaros y la autor del texto al que estamos distribuyendo copias a todos ustedes. McLean.
Gracias, y gracias por invitarnos hoy. Así que esto fue una descubrimiento realmente emocionante para nosotros. Hace seis años enlistamos a cinco panderas para venir a Sunnylands cada semana, y comenzamos a documentar la vida natural que estaba en el edificio. Lo que descubrimos fue más de 130 especies de pájaros documentadas hasta ahora, either migrando o viviendo en el edificio. En la investigación más profunda, comenzamos a掘金en los archivos, y eso fue realmente una descubrimiento emocionante porque descubrimos que, sabíamos que Walter tenía un interés en los pájaros, lo que no sabíamos era la profundidad de ello. Uno de los resultados más importantes es que cuando estaba discutiendo el construcción de Sunnylands con A. Quincy Jones, designó 25 acres para ser tratados a lo largo del paisaje como un santuario de pájaros para ofrecer respiro a cualquier pájaro que viajara en el camino de la vía pacífica, a lo que estaba consciente que Sunnylands estaba siendo construida en esa región. Así que eso comenzó, muchas historias, mucho emoción. Y terminamos encantando el fotógrafo geográfico nacional, Tim Lehman, quien también ha hecho proyectos con Planet Earth, para pasar dos años y visitas documentando el de Sunnylands, y ahora tenemos esta exhibición gráfica contemporánea de él. Y estoy mirando mi timer (Risas), de él, y también la historia de los Annenberg's que va incluso más allá de Sunnylands. Así que además de ese hogar, también estaban mirando cómo interactuaron con los pájaros en otros hogares también, incluyendo Winfield y su hogar en Wood. Eso es todo. ¿Algunos otros?
¿Algunos otros? Sunnylands.
Sí, lo hago. ¿Estos son por reservas solamente, o cómo funciona?
Las tours en el edificio son por reservas, así que es el mismo sistema. Y cuando haces una tour de pájaros, que hemos ampliado, vamos a hacer dos tours de pájaros los jueves y los sábados. Tienes que obtener reservas para esos. En el centro y jardines hacemos una semana, un recorrido de pájaros el jueves. Y hemos ampliado los programas también, así que verás que los pájaros se reflejan en ellos. Uno en particular será, ¿me acaba el tiempo? Está bien, uno en particular será, estamos haciendo una introducción al paseo de pájaros para la comunidad para enseñar a la gente que ha estado interesada en entrar en el paseo y no lo han hecho. Y lo estamos haciendo uno en inglés y uno en español. La exhibición es bilingüe, y mucho del programación ahora se está haciendo en ambos idiomas.
Muy bien. ¿Hay un sitio web y números de teléfono?
Hay, el sitio web sería www.sunnylands.org, y el número de teléfono sería 7602022200.
Repita eso una más. Muy bien.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Espera un minuto.
Muchas gracias, Iris.
Si pudieras decirnos un poco más sobre su café y las oportunidades que la gente tiene, incluso si no tienen boletos, si quieren pararse y solo ver los jardines.
Absolutamente, así que el centro y jardines se abre gratis, jueves a los sábados. Agregamos un año, un día este año, así que en lugar de jueves a los sábados ahora viene más temprano el jueves, de 8:30 a 4:00. El café sirve cafés, tés, almuerzo. La tienda ahora está almacenada con todas las nuevas cosas emocionantes de este año, así que pueden venir a comprar allí. Y si solo quieren caminar por los jardines, tienen un kilómetro y cuarto de tránsito que pueden caminar allí gratis cualquier momento que estemos abiertos.
Muy bien. ¿El aceite de oliva sigue en venta? Una pregunta más.
Acabo de escapar. Este año no tendremos el aceite de oliva. Fue más allá de nuestro control con un problema que sucedió a olivas en California. Pero todavía tenemos el programa. Estamos colaborando con Tomah Olive Oil, y el próximo año lo harán. También estamos teniendo en UCR Master Gardeners participar en el proyecto.
Bueno, la razón por la que pregunté si usaría mi botella de la otra.
Oh, no.
Estoy fuera.
Más temporada.
Gracias.
Charlie, tengo un extra.
¿Puedo comprarlo de ti?
Te veré mañana, ¿vale?
Gracias.
Está bien, siguiente orador.
Señor presidente, el siguiente orador es Brad Anderson.
Hola, Brad Anderson, Rancho Mirage. Quería hablar sobre algunas cosas hoy. Uno, el mes pasado, aproximadamente el 11, o en realidad fue el 11, mi vecino me informó de un perro que quedó en el corner de Devar y Gerald Ford. Parecía haber sido golpeado por un coche, pero en realidad, después de llevarlo al veterinario, fue severamente atado por un perro más grande. Pero he tenido a este perro por más de un mes ahora, y nadie ha venido a reclamarlo. Y me asusta que esto suceda. Y solo, solo quiero pedirle a la gente, realmente, si tienes un perro, incluso si no es neutrado, haga el esfuerzo para llevar a tu perro a casa porque absorbería todo el costo. Pero ahora, ahora lo recuperarás porque te esperaste demasiado. Pero de todos modos, solo quiero enfatizar que seas, si vas a tomar a un perro, toma responsabilidad, y eso sigue con. Gracias. Y quería hablar de el Distrito de Vector muy rápido, y veo que se dio la presentación. Y estoy de acuerdo, el 80 es de la mano. De la mano, y ahora se ha desplomado en Rancho Mirage incluso más que sabía porque esta información no está disponible en el sitio web. Y fue asimismo pedido por el gerente de relaciones públicas cualquier solicitud previo que tenga del Distrito tiene que pasar por un pedido de registros públicos, incluso añadiendo cosas. Y eso es un poco... And, and that's kind of, it's, it's not, it should, should it be like that? And I'm just asking for what chemicals you're going to use and amounts you're going to use and what precautions you're taking. Everything, these, these requests that I'm asking for are just information any, any, any citizen from this valley should be able to obtain without doing a public records request. But I, I think more transparency from the district would be a, a great thing, being that this is an epidemic-type proportions of this mosquito species. And, and it's not out of hand. It can be combated and can be prevented. I know we're doing a larva sighting, or they're doing a larva sighting, aerial larva sighting down in Mecca, and it's very efficient. I've done the test before on the last larva sighting in Indio or larva sighting, and it does work, but it's not very efficient. I mean, it's, I don't know if I can explain a larva sighting, you're just going to, if you have a glass of water in somebody's backyard, you're dumping chemical on everything to get that glass of water, you know? So it's, it's not, it's, it's not cost-effective, but it does work. And it's really the long-term plan of the district, I believe, for these pesticides and applications by area and, and fogging and so forth. And there's better ways to do this, and I know there, this can be corrected. And if it can't be corrected, we need a long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi?
That's the last speaker, Mayor.
Okay. If you would, still would like to speak and you haven't filled out a speaker's card, you can come forward. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on any item? Okay. Do you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Would you come up forward?
Oh.
Thank you.
I just wanted to know, Kristi, are you going to call me? I, I left a piece of paper there with you.
Yes, sir. You will be called during that item, the discussion for that particular item. This was non-agenda public comments.
Sorry about that. I'm from La Quinta, so I don't know the rules.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Again, this is for non-agenda public comments. Okay. Thank you, Kristi. All right. Now we will move on to City Council and Board Member comments, and start with Charlie. Charlie, you couldn't have anything left to talk about today, could you?
Richard, I have nothing left to talk about. The only thing I'm thinking of, is there a premium on that olive oil that you're going to sell me?
Going up, as we said.
Very good. Thank you. I'm just fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana?
Well, I can't resist the opportunity of mentioning one thing that's normally worthy of at least five or 10 minutes of discussion, but just enough to alert those of you who don't know about it. Right now, there is a plan coming from Cathedral City to have a intersection at the I-10 freeway and Deval, an off-ramp at I-10 and Deval for vehicles going on Deval, both north and south. There's a lot of residential communities in there, and there's a park in there, there's a school in there, and we have opposed it. We, the City of Ranch Mirage, has opposed it. The City of Cathedral City continues to want to move forward. If you have an opportunity to speak on the subject or to get involved in any way, that's what's at stake. It's going to be a very dangerous situation for people from, certainly from Ramon to the freeway, and possibly beyond that, that is further south, where Deval ends at Frank Sinatra. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dana. Iris?
Nothing for me today.
And Ted, how are you, Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On October 3rd is National Coffee with a Cop Day. We have held this periodically, one within the last several months, at the Gelson Shopping Center. It's, it's, it's a great event, and it's an opportunity for you to meet the local law enforcement people in the Sheriff's Department that are basically assigned to Ranch Mirage. Some are there that are not necessarily assigned. But just like the law enforcement people that are sitting in the audience today, they're always available to chat, meet, meet with you, put a face with a name, and it, it provides what we stress is community. We have a warm, collective community in Ranch Mirage. And this opportunity at KOFFI, which is K-O-F-F-I, on Highway 111, across from the indigo automobile dealerships, and it's on October 3rd from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. It's just a wonderful opportunity to participate in public safety. And I encourage you to come out, meet our law enforcement people, and you'll be rewarded and enjoy a very, frankly, a warm invitation. So look forward to seeing you on October 3rd. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. We'll both be there too, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Look forward to everybody out there to take a little time out, meet your friendly police. One of the items that we do on a public service basis periodically is document shredding and e-waste collection. And if you want to protect your identity and the environment, you can participate in the city's free document shredding and e-waste collection event. This event will be held on Saturday, October 13th, 2018, and will be available to all Ranch Mirage residents with proof of residency. We don't want anybody sneaking in from Cathedral City. So you have to be a resident of Ranch Mirage. This free event will take place at the Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory in the west parking lot at 8:00 a.m. till noon, or when the trucks are full. All documents will be shredded on-site and then recycled. Examples of documents one might shred include tax documents, all like to get those out of the house, I think, bank statements, real estate transactions, and other legal or confidential papers. Shredding will be limited to six 12-ounce by 17-ounce or inch by nine-inch boxes of documents per resident. E-waste such as old televisions, computers, monitors, cell phones, printers, and household electronics will also be collected free of charge and recycled. So residents can drop off batteries and household devices such as laptops, flashlights, handheld radios, and other small electronics. Household hazardous waste such as paint, pesticides, automobile batteries, bulbs are not accepted by this particular entity. For more information, though, you can contact City Hall at 760-324-1411. That number again is 760-324-4511. Hope you'll take advantage of this very special event. We do it a couple of times a year, and we've really taken a lot of e-waste and a lot of items to be recycled. So with that being done, Steve, I believe you have an item for the calendar.
Thank you. I don't want people to think I'm on Facebook over here. So it's come to the attention of our Director of Administrative Services. His name is Coffey, too. Spelled with one F, Coffey Etterbaum. He discovered that there was an error in our recognized obligation payment schedule that was submitted to the county that needs to be corrected. However, we need to make that correction prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting. And what we have, are putting to the council tonight is a resolution amending the recognized obligation payment schedule for January 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2018 pursuant to AB, that's the bill, 26X1 and AB 1484. So the Act allows an item to be added onto the agenda as an urgency item if there's a four-fifths vote of the City Council at it.
So what should the motion be? Okay. So you want a motion, Steve?
To add the item as an urgency item to today's agenda.
All right. I'll make that motion.
Is there a motion and a second?
Second.
Please vote.
And motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Thank you.
So Madam City Clerk, would you please place this item as the last item on the agenda as a resolution amending recognized obligation payment schedule for January 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2019?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. We'll now move on to the amendments from the meeting of September 6th. Is there a motion to accept the amendments?
I will make that motion to accept.
And there's a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Hey, thank you very much. Okay. The next item on the calendar is the consent calendar, and that'll be presented by our city manager, Isaiah Hagerman. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, you have seven items on your consent calendar today. Item number one is the waiver of the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. And if you don't approve that, Councilmember Townsend has volunteered to read every word.
Absolutely.
Item number two on the consent calendar is for the City Council to approve final track map number 35619 and direct the city engineer and city clerk to sign and record the map. Track map 35619 proposes to subdivide one five-acre parcel into nine residential lots. The subdivision is located on the north side of Ginger Rogers Road in Section 30, and I think we have a picture of that. Item number three on the consent calendar is for the City Council to approve final track map number 35089 and direct the city engineer and city clerk to sign and record the map. Track map number 35089 proposes to subdivide two five-acre parcels into 18 residential lots. And again, this one is located in Section 30, as shown on your screen. Item number four on the consent calendar is for the City Council to, A, approve the final parcel map number 37218 and direct the city engineer and city clerk to sign and record the map; B, accept the private improvements for parcel map number 37218 as completed and authorize the filing of the notice of completion; and C, accept the public improvements for parcel map number 37218 as completed and authorize the filing of the notice of acceptance. This was a three-residential lot development, and the developer opted to perform the private and public improvements in advance of starting the project as a way of not having to bond for those improvements. Item number five is that the City Council accept the private improvements for parcel number 31761 as completed and authorize the filing of the notice of completion; and B, accept the public improvements for parcel number 31761 as completed and authorize the filing of the notice of acceptance. This project was the rehabilitation center on the corner of Ramon and Deval, and this one's been a long time coming, so we now have a beautiful rehabilitation center right there on the corner. Item number six on your consent calendar is the contracts list. There are three contracts on that list, all from Public Works, one for landscape maintenance, one for our HVAC maintenance, and one for janitorial services. All three of those contracts were awarded to the lowest responsive bidder. And item number seven, our demands, and staff is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from staff? Ted?
Yes. Mr. City Manager or Public Works, on item number two and three for the track map 35619 and 35089, have we received will-serv letters for those tracks?
I can address that, Councilman. These tracks were originally approved approximately 11, 10 or 11 years ago, and we did receive will-serv letters at that time. We did not reach back out to the Water District, but subsequent to that, we have received will-serv letters for other track developments in the area.
So in theory, those could be ready to go at any time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions? Anybody in the audience have a question regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, could I have a motion, please, to accept the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
I'll make that motion to accept consent calendar as read one through seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number eight on today's agenda, report and of several items, programs that are being held here in the city. The first item is item number eight, which is the Summer Reading Program, and we'll have a recap by Valentin. Valentin, nice to see you. And also by Aaron, who is the library director. So who's first today?
I'm going to go ahead and start. Thank you and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and city staff. Valentin Lort, our children's librarian, and I are very excited to give you an update on the Summer Reading Program that was held over eight weeks from June through, or into August. This year, our program was called Reading Through the Universe. There should be a PowerPoint where we celebrated all things space and astronomy. I'm very proud of the, of our staff this year, not only for a successful program, but this is the first year in that we designed it completely using our staff, not anything that was pre-designed and then modifying. The image of the front is what you see in our booklet and you see on our screen today. As you can see, Brian and Patricia A. Herman continue their generous support of the Summer Reading Program for the second consecutive year. Without their generous support, we would not have been able to have all the programs and performers here during the summer. I will now turn it over to Valentin, who will give you the update to the most successful Summer Reading Club hosted by the Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory.
Thank you, Aaron. As Aaron mentioned, in early August, we concluded our most successful Summer Reading Program in a library's 23-year history. Whoop. There we go. We had 1,423 registrations for a Summer Reading Program, which was a 44% increase over last year's 990 registrations. Our completions, which ranged from 150 minutes for early readers to 750 minutes for adults, resulted in 1,435 completed logs. Our patrons were able to submit multiple logs and turn them in for raffle tickets for our prizes at the end of our Summer Reading Club. We completed 8,125 hours, which is equivalent to about 338 days of non-stop reading. We were so impressed by our patrons that they were almost able to complete over a year's worth of reading in eight weeks. Pictured here is our Galactic Wall of Champions, which represents those who completed their logs. It was great to see the look of accomplishment on the faces of our readers. Many names were repeated due to the number of logs they completed. All right. This summer, we held 51 programs for children and young adults of Coachella Valley. For all these programs, our attendance was outstanding. We had a total of 8,055 attendees. That's an increase of 83% over last year. On average, that is 1,007 patrons per week for our children's program. We had programs every day, which consisted of varied activities. We did arts and crafts, hosted performers, learned about individual planets, book discussion groups, and partnered with Desert Recreation and the Ranch Mirage Police Department, and of course, movies. Our favorites included Making Nebulas, Candy Mars Rovers, Telescope, and our, our multiple partnerships with the Desert Recreation District. We are pleased to see that students from over 70 schools throughout the valley's three school districts. One of the goals of the Library and Observatory is to reach across the Coachella Valley, and this year, we have done just that. We had participants from every city in the Coachella Valley, with the top three being Palm Desert, Cathedral City, and Ranch Mirage. Palm Desert, Cathedral City, and Rancho Mirage. The success of our summer reading program would not have also been possible with the help of our teen volunteers. This summer, we had 10 volunteers. They were hardworking, helpful, and above all, loved to work with the kids. They helped prepare our countless crafts and help our patrons with our registration table, where kids turned in their logs for book bucks. Overall, they completed 683 hours, which is equivalent to two full-time employees over the eight-week program. This summer has been an incredible experience, and the feedback has been great. One mother wrote us a thank-you card stating, "We cannot thank you enough for the most wonderful, fun, educational program for summer reading. We had so many full days of reading and learning."
Thank you, Valentin. As one would expect from the Rancho Mirage Library, we've already been hard at work planning for the 2019 Summer Reading Club. We're excited to announce that next year's theme will be reading around the world, where we will be exploring the seven continents. In addition to next year's theme, we're also excited to announce that Brian and Patricia A. Herman have already committed to sponsor the summer reading program for the third consecutive year. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to publicly thank Brian and Patricia Herman for their amazing support. The city, the library and observatory, and the participants of the summer reading club cannot thank them enough. It is supporters like them that enable the city and the library to offer high-quality programming and learning opportunities. I'd also take a moment to thank our City Council, City Manager for all of their support for allowing me and our library staff to creatively and enjoyably promote our mission of lifelong learning. Thank you, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Aaron, you guys do such a great job, and you can hardly thank you enough for the programs that you do. Valentin, the program is so successful because of the time you put in and the effort. Nobody could run that program like you do, and you can just look at the numbers and see the number of participants we have now. Thanks for doing such a great job. Aaron, you certainly brought together a great staff over the library, and again, that's another real success story, and we're glad to have you both here today.
Thank you.
Any comments from?
Just one comment. I wanted to add my congratulations also, but what I found so remarkable about all of your statistics on the screen were that there were so many, many children from schools outside of the Coachella Valley, and it just shows how many people are visiting here. They're visiting their grandparents, their friends, whomever, and they are so thrilled to come to our programming, and you two have just done remarkable work in bringing everyone in and making them feel welcome. Thank you again.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I'd likewise add that, and I'm sure I speak for the entire City Council, that very seldom do we not receive favorable comments about the library and the reading program. And it's to your credit that you have endured this program to the success that it has. It's recognized, and we're all most thankful for your effort. So congratulations to you both.
Thank you again.
Okay, thanks again. You know, if there's one program that's even more successful than the summer reading program, it's the observatory program. This work that started last spring has created so much excitement around the valley and around the state, and we're getting recognized by various groups clear across the country. So it's unbelievable the amount of people that we have taken and shown the program to. We get requests every day for more and more people, school kids, retired people, coming to the observatory. We almost have to turn people away, we have so many coming. So Aaron, I'd like to have you talk a little bit about the program and what makes it so successful.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. It's been three months since our last update of the newest community asset, the Rancho Mirage Observatory. Over the past three months, the fascination with the observatory continues to grow. Amid the summer heat, the observatory has offered tours, programs, stargazing events with over 2,367 participants. Since our doors opened on March 25th, 180 days ago, the observatory has served over 5,000 people. I have heard time and time again the appreciation of our residents and visitors to the City Council for their vision to bring such an amazing facility to the Coachella Valley. The biggest draw to the observatory has been our stargazing parties. Over half of the total observatory attendance has been those participating in our stargazing events. One challenge that was needed to be addressed was the amount of time in which our events were filling up and how to ease the stress of our Rancho Mirage residents and our donors to the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory Foundation. This week, staff sent out an e-blast indicating that Rancho Mirage residents and Gold Card members were allowed to register one week early for stargazing events. Excuse me. On Monday, I'm sorry, this week, September 24th, upcoming Monday, registration will open to the public. As of this morning, we had 100 spots filled, which was Rancho Mirage residents and our donors, and we look forward to offering more early registration for upcoming programming to our residents and our supporters. Although there have been over 100 people already registered, there are still over 500 spots left for the month of October. To be fair and equitable, after the registration process has filled up, our staff does do a review of the attendee list to ensure our patrons are not signing up for multiple events while there is a waiting list of other new visitors. The time change on November 4th will open new possibilities. The time change will allow us to offer more events November through early April. On the night selected as stargazing events, we will be offering two stargazing events per evening. The first will run from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. and will be more geared towards families. The second event will run from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. The 6:00 p.m. event will be our first reasonable opportunity to allow children to view through the telescopes. Over the past few months, we've not been able to start our programming until 8:30, which is when most children are already passed in bed. Although the events will, the 6:00 p.m. events will be geared towards families, everybody will be able to register, but with the 6:00 p.m. being a tad bit noisier. Based on the two events per night, we will be able to accommodate many more visitors. In addition to the original lectures by our city astronomer, Eric McLaughlin, our programming for the fall season will include astronomy-based film screenings and a return visit on November 26th of Dr. Kelly Fass, who is the Near Earth Object Observation Program Manager for NASA. The library and observatory staff is in the final development stages of our astrophotography program. What is astrophotography? Astrophotography is a specialized type of photography for recording photos and astronomical objects, celestial events, and areas of the night sky. The images on the screen have been taken by our CDK-700 and our camera. Participants in the astrophotography program will be given the opportunity to select objects in the night sky and take pictures with our telescopes and cameras the city has provided. The images taken by the participants is just one example of astrophotography. The next step in the astrophotography program is for them to manipulate the images that they have taken with software provided on the computers in the cosmic office. What's the difference? Let's take a look. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Bruce Feigl for allowing us to use some of the images he has taken and modified. Bruce is one of our docents and has been a big help in the development of this program. As you can see, these images are beautiful. I'm very excited for this program to get underway soon. Other exciting program staff is currently working on is a program called "I Bought a Telescope, Now What," in which Eric and our docents will teach people how to use the telescopes that they have purchased and don't know how to use. We will also be offering a program on how to build your own telescope. Many of the programs we have talked about are primarily scheduled for the evening. So what do we have scheduled for the daytime? A few select lectures will be presented at our normal two o'clock hour, but we continue to offer two tours of the observatory each day. For the month of October, they will be at 10:00 and 5:00, but starting in November, we'll be switching them to 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Given the time change and the earlier start times for our stargazing events, staff needs time to set up. However, there's another reason we selected those times. We are very excited to announce, and for those in attendance, I hope you had an opportunity to get a sneak peek, the Rancho Mirage Observatory is now the proud owner of our first solar telescope. The Lunt Solar Telescope arrived last week, and we quickly put it to work. The images on the screen were taken by Eric on Saturday, September 15th. The lower-left image shows the sun at the telescope's regular magnification. The larger image on the right uses a Barlow lens to increase the magnification. Library staff had the opportunity to view the telescope last Thursday, and we noticed solar flares primarily on the edges of the sun. While preparing for this presentation, I asked Eric to explain the lack of activity on the sun in these images. Excuse me. Eric stated that in these pictures, the magnetic field on the sun was unstable at the time due to its being at its solar minimum. Of course, I gave him a perplexed look. Solar minimum? Eric then proceeded to tell me it would be best if I joined him at tonight's presentation at 7:00 p.m. called "Here Comes the Sun: The Surface of the Sun and Space Weather." He also offered that I might learn a lot at that program. I simply smiled and thanked Eric for his help. The solar telescope is just one exciting tool that we have been provided to provide high-level programming at the observatory. So whether it is day or night, the Rancho Mirage Observatory will be ready to harvest starlight and convert it to knowledge. I want to again thank the City Council and the City Manager for your support as we continue to learn and develop at the Rancho Mirage Observatory. I would be happy to answer any of your questions.
You are having a great input with the schools trying to get programs, and I understand that has become quite the phenomenon.
Yes, we were the recipients of a $25,000 scholarship from the Anderson Children's Foundation, and we will be working on bringing all fifth-grade students from the Coachella Valley, three school districts, and home schools and private schools to the observatory in the very near future.
Well, I think I'm not being remiss in saying that our observatory has gone off the chart. Thanks to everybody that was involved, everybody that had the faith and confidence in the council, the people that it together, and it was built. Thank you, everybody.
Aaron, great job again. We continue to look forward to the next words you can bring us from the universe. Any other comments?
Just one comment, that congratulations on your new solar telescope, and it just shows how Rancho Mirage is reaching out to every age group and every interest group, whether it's our park, our community park, our amphitheater, our big telescope, our observatory, whatever it is with our learning programs, we reach out to everyone, and we want to make everyone feel welcome. So thank you for all your efforts.
Any other comments? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thanks for the great job, Aaron. Okay, we'll now move on to the public hearings for the day, and item number 10 is a public hearing for SmartLink Wireless Telecommunications Facility, conditional use permit, case number CUP 18001.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, but I have to recuse myself due to my holdings of AT&amp;T stocks and bonds.
Thank you, Charles.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, my personal residence is within 500 feet of the designated property and by law, I also will recuse myself and leave the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make an announcement here. So I've been informed by both Mayor Protem Smuttrich and Councilmember, oh, he's gone, Townsend, that they both have investments with AT&amp;T. However, we're not looking at the investments, the amount of the investments, we look at the amount of income, and apparently Councilmember Townsend has made more in the last six months than Mayor Protem Smuttrich. As such, that's the reason why he left. So she can't participate, and the reason why Ms. Smuttrich can participate is because the law requires that we have at least a quorum of the City Council, which is three out of the five. Without a quorum, they can't make a decision one way or the other. So the law allows us, or basically mandates, that we bring at least one of them back to participate.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Iris, congratulations. Okay, and Dana, you're set for a little bit of exercise here, huh? Well, today, we are going to dock the public hearing, which we invite everyone who is here today to express their opinions about the proposed cell tower. We will begin the public hearing with a verbal staff report, which will be provided by our planning manager, Bud Cobb, sitting at the end of the diocese, followed by City Council questions of staff. Afterwards, I'll invite the applicant to say anything that they have regarding the program, and then I will open the public testimony period and allow anyone today to comment about the project. Each person will have a total of three minutes. No one can cede their time to anyone else. Speakers will be invited to speak on a first-come, first-served basis, meaning that speakers will be invited to speak based on the order of speaker cards about which they turned in earlier in the day to our city clerk, Kristy Ramos. So if you did not fill out a speaker's card and do want to speak, you'll be given an opportunity to speak a total of three minutes after all the speaker cards have been exhausted. After the public testimony period is completed, the applicant will be invited back to the podium to make any final comments. Thereafter, the council will then may ask questions of the staff or the applicant to respond to various issues that have been discussed previously. After the council has had all the questions addressed, the council will then deliberate and decide on the issue and take a vote. So let's begin the process today. Bud Cobb, our planning manager. Bud?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, council members. The purpose of this project is to, let's get slides up. Okay, thank you. The purpose of this project is to consider an application by SmartLink on behalf of AT&amp;T for the construction of a 60-foot-tall clock tower with architecturally-integrated telecommunications equipment within a 693-square-foot lease area. The proposed location is a Westin Mission Hills storage yard adjacent to the west side of the existing tennis courts. The proposed tower and enclosure would be located over 300 feet south of Dyna Shore, 134 feet from the nearest residence on Sunningdale Drive, and 360 feet from the nearest home on Villa Haciendas. To the east are existing tennis courts, Westin Mission Hills hotel rooms, and the convention facilities beyond. To the south is existing Mission Hills hotel rooms. West are existing residences on Sunningdale Drive, and to the north across Dyna Shore is the new Dell Webb Community, and to the northwest are existing single-family residences in legacy Mission Hills. The general plan and zoning of the subject site is commercial resort hotel. The city continues to receive numerous complaints every year about poor wireless reception in certain parts of the city, notably from residents in the Mission Hills area. Poor wireless reception affects homeowners and the home-based businesses that they may have, also guest staying at the Westin and their ability to compete for conferences with other resorts in the Coachella Valley. As shown on this slide, half of all cell tower applications that are approved by the city are never constructed by the cellular provider. The Westin Mission Hills has worked with multiple wireless providers to improve coverage in the service area over the past 20 years. Prior approvals for Sprint, PCS, Verizon, and AT&amp;T include wireless equipment with an existing 46-foot cupolas and 55- to 60-foot flagpoles that were never constructed. In fact, 2/3 of the applications that were approved by the city on the Westin property were never constructed by the telecommunications provider. This is the existing AT&amp;T This is the existing AT&amp;T coverage map for the project vicinity. Purple indicates marginal outdoor-only signal, green indicates satisfactory indoor signal, and yellow being an in-vehicle signal. As you can see, there's very poor AT&amp;T wireless coverage in this area. The proposed facility would be located within a 693-square-foot enclosed area, measuring about 22 feet from east to west, by about 31 and 1/2 feet north to south. Vehicular access to AT&amp;T's lease area would be from the existing Westin resort driveways, and parking can be easily accommodated to service this facility from the existing parking lot located on the south side of the tennis courts. All ground-mounted equipment within the enclosure is less than 6 feet in height, a decorative wrought iron gate for security, and a 5-foot-wide sidewalk connects the entry gate to the service vehicle parking space. The design of this facility does permit co-location for up to three carriers. The four tower legs are each 4 and 1/2 feet square, contain telecommunications equipment, and a hidden access ladder to service the equipment in the upper octagonal portion of the clock tower. The overall dimensions of the base of the tower are 21 feet by 21 feet. Where the base of the tower meets the octagonal equipment enclosure, the edges have been tapered to mimic architecture of other towers on the Westin property. The octagonal feature resting on top of the 46-foot-tall base is 15 by 15 and conceals the antenna layout. A 12-foot diameter perforated dome, similar in design to other Moroccan domes on the Westin property, completes the top of the octagonal feature. The east elevation with the proposed clock that faces the tennis courts is shown on the left-hand side of the screen. The backing of the clock would be a translucent milky-white acrylic finish with dial markings in black. Rings and hands are to have a black polyurethane finish. Illumination of the clock face will be backlit through LED lighting, and no audible sound will be emitted by the clock. The remaining three sides of the structure are identical and instead of a clock, have medallions similar to other towers found throughout the Westin Resort. The proposed tower will have a stucco finish, foam trim, and is conditioned to be the same colors as other towers on the property. The Architectural Review Board reviewed the project and requested some upgrades to the architecture and ultimately endorsed the design and landscape screening. This slide illustrates the viewshed impact to the nearest residents. The northern portion of Sunningdale has very large tamarisk trees that currently exist and effectively would screen the view. In accordance with the grading plan in the exhibit booklet, the proposed base of the tower is about 15 and 1/2 feet lower than the top of the wall that you see on the screen here. Therefore, 44 and 1/2 feet of the tower would be visible above the wall if no trees were proposed for visual screening. Although this is a fairly poor visual simulation, the geometry of the conditions demonstrates adequate screening. Condition of approval number 12 in your agenda requires this area to be planted with six 48-inch box African sumac trees, which is a dense shade tree, tough and reliable in dry desert conditions. The evergreen foliage gains a height of about 25 to 30 feet with an equal canopy spread. The African sumac trees are usually about 15 feet tall with a 15-foot canopy upon installation, which is already half their mature height. During the planning commission's review, they recommended clarification of staff's condition to require a minimum tree height of 15 feet upon installation. A person standing immediately in front of the nearest home on Sunningdale will view the top of the tower at about an 18 to 19-degree angle above eye level, as shown by the top red line. When the African sumac trees achieve maturity, only the dome and a portion of the octagonal feature of the tower would be visible at a distance. The yellow line just below indicates the height of the tree upon installation and the top portion of the tower that would be visible. This slide shows a rendering of the clock tower facing the tennis courts. As you can see, the large tamarisk trees to the right in the background would effectively screen the structure from the northernmost units on Sunningdale. And when the trees mature, the area below the yellow line would appear as a hedge row extension of those tamarisk trees. This rendering shows the clock tower as seen from Dyna Shore. The tower's 360 feet from the curb is shown in this photo. Again, this isn't the best quality rendering, and the tower as viewed is basically a football fields distance away from Dyna Shore and would appear smaller and thinner than shown in this rendering. I'd like to display several propagation maps. This map shows current coverage by AT&amp;T with the purple indicating probable sufficient open coverage, but it may not have in-vehicle coverage and is likely to not have in-building coverage. Yellow is kind of the intermediate area showing sufficient open coverage and most in-vehicle coverage, but possibly, and possibly some in-building coverage. And green is the most desirable, which has the strongest signal strength and is sufficient for most in-building coverage. This slide shows coverage if the proposed facility is built as proposed. Note, nearly all areas have in-building coverage, with the most marginal areas between the towers having in-vehicle and outdoor coverage. Staff asked the applicant to provide information related to service coverage if the proposed tower was lowered to 45 feet. In-building coverage ranges from about 1,300 to 1,700 feet from the tower base. Additional facilities would likely need consideration in order to accomplish the same coverage as the proposed 60-foot tower. This 45-foot alternative retains numerous gaps in coverage for Mission Hills, Mira Vista, Legacy, and Dell Webb, but is consistent with previously-approved applications that were never built on the Westin property. As an informational item, staff asked the applicant to provide a map showing how the proposed location could fill nearly all gaps in that portion of the city. And as shown on this map, the applicant responded that to completely fill the coverage gap, an 85-foot-tall tower would be required. Staff would not support such a tall structure at that location as hedge row of trees would not adequately, would not provide adequate screening. Based on the number of complaints the city receives each year regarding the poor wireless coverage in the Mission Hills area and the impact that poor coverage has on Westin guests, repeat conferences, and the impact on people that work from home, and safety concerns for those without landlines, staff and the planning commission agreed that the proposed 60-foot-tall architectural clock tower would eliminate as many gaps in coverage as possible while substantially mitigating viewshed impacts with the trees for screening. Per city code, wireless communication facilities are not subject to any absolute height limit provided the proposed facility addresses potential view impacts. Integrated architectural solutions are always preferred over monopoms where possible, and design is always a strong consideration in Rancho Mirage. Landscape screening is almost always provided. The city has no distancing requirements to residential, schools, hospitals, or other land uses. In fact, there are other wireless facilities in the city much closer to residential homes, and four carriers are currently located on top of Eisenhower. Telecommunications equipment is also located on other hotel properties within commercial towers, cupolas, flagpoles, and other creative stealth methods throughout the city. At the July 26th Planning Commission, staff distributed the letters of support and opposition received up to the time of that meeting. The public also spoke in favor and opposition to the project. Reasons for support included current poor to nonexistent reception, the need for better reception in the event of an emergency, earthquake, or other personal safety concern, the dependence on technology to conduct business from home, and the quality of homeownership being compromised with poor wireless coverage. Under reasons for opposition, health and environmental effects related to radio frequency emissions as regulated by the FCC were voiced as a concern, the height of the proposed tower at 60 feet, that the proposed location is too close to residential, and possible impacts that the facility may have on property value and/or saleability of homes. All correspondence received by staff since the planning commission agenda has been included in your agenda today or has been distributed by the city clerk, there has been one form letter that has been circulating that suggests using a 1,500-foot buffer between cell towers and residential. As shown on this map, that distancing requirement would have prevented all existing 24 towers in the city from being constructed. The only land available where a cell tower could be placed with that distancing requirement would be a fraction of Monterey Marketplace, the cove across from Motel 6, and a thin strip of land by the railroad. Less than 48 hours ago, I was informed by the applicant that the proposed tower will not initially be a 5G tower. The applicant may wish to elaborate on that during their time allotment. The form letter also suggested that we review ordinances of five other specified cities, and we did. Although some of those cities have established distancing requirements, the distancing requirements seemed ambiguous and provided numerous exceptions. This tower could have been built in any of those cities. In fact, we found that our code is just as restrictive as those cities mentioned, and we found our design guidelines to be superior. In summary, this clock tower is a unique architectural solution to improve telecommunications in the Mission Hills area. Speculation on whether the FCC regulations are adequate is beyond our subject matter jurisdiction, and we do not know, we do not know that the city... There have been two other AT&amp;T facilities that have been approved on the Westin site, but for some reason, AT&amp;T chose not to build them, which could have improved service over the last eight years. Current reception is poor in the area, affects the ability of residents and the Westin to conduct business. Poor to nonexistent reception does affect safety and security of residents and visitors in this part of the city, especially those without landlines or medical issues. After conducting research as suggested, we found our code just as restrictive as those cities mentioned and our design guidelines to be superior. On July 26th, the planning commission recommended that the project as conditioned complies with the Rancho Mirage municipal code and that the city council approve conditional use permit, case number 18001, based on the content findings and conditions in your staff report. We'd be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bud. Iris, do you have any questions regarding staff's report? Dana, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open the public hearing and ask the applicant to step forward. Afternoon.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Kite and all the council members and city staff. I greatly appreciate you allowing me to speak here today. My name is Alexis Hadley. I am here representing AT&amp;T. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I have prepared. If we could get that pulled up. Thank you. I apologize for anybody who was able to endure this presentation at Planning Commission, but I assure you I have made some modifications to it and some of the elements I believe will address a lot of the concerns that have been brought up by members of the public and hopefully help with this particular public hearing. My job starts with a search ring, which is basically a circle on a map. And AT&amp;T supercomputers generate these search rings. They generate them from user data and also coming in from surrounding towers and also from customer complaints regarding dropped calls. My first item of business when I receive this search ring is to figure out the particular jurisdiction and then the municipal codes that relate to wireless communication facilities. I then take the preferences and requirements of the wireless ordinance, coupled with my preliminary conversations with the local planning department and staff, and then I begin contacting property owners. As the demand for coverage increases, my search rings get smaller, and I have to take into consideration surrounding AT&amp;T sites, which you can see by the triangular blue numbers around my particular search ring. When contacting property owners and selecting viable candidates, I have to keep in mind what I call the five UBS of site acquisition and locating a cellphone tower. The first element that I consider, and always the most important, is whether or not a particular cellphone tower is zonable. I have to make sure that I am in compliance with the local zoning code and that I am proposing site designs and locations that are compatible with the jurisdiction and their preferences. The city of Rancho Mirage strongly encourages stealth designs, as Mr. Cop just informed us, that can be fully screened and enclosed within architectural features of preferably an existing design. If I don't have a building tall enough, then I can propose another type of design that can fully enclose the antennas like the clock tower that we are currently proposing. The city also strongly prefers that I locate cellphone towers on commercial and industrial properties. The next UBS that I have to consider is whether or not this property is leasable. Thankfully, we did have a willing and able landlord in the Westin Resort that was wanting to work with us. There are certain lease requirements that AT&amp;T needs in order to make a particular cell site profitable, and the Westin Resort has been able to work with us, and we were able to reach a compromise and a good lease agreement that will allow for the cell tower to be profitable and work for AT&amp;T. The third one is RF-engineerable. And basically, this is the number-one item that typically will kill a potential location for one of our proposed cell towers. I need to make sure that I can obtain enough height without any nearby interference. There needs to be no buildings or no trees directly blocking the antenna signal on the wireless communication facility to fill the gap in coverage. This is, again, generally the biggest factor that would kill one of my possible towers. Our networks work like a honeycomb. If I go back to the previous slide, I won't go back, but we need to make sure that our towers have a line of sight to the surrounding towers, because as you're driving through Rancho Mirage and you're connecting to one tower, as soon as you move out of that area, you will then be connecting to the next nearby tower. Also, each one of our towers have what we call azimuths, which is basically the direction that our antennas are facing. Each one of our towers has three and sometimes four different azimuths, which is basically three different directions that the antennas are facing in order to connect with the nearby towers. So it is very important, the specific location of each one of our towers, and even the slightest move in location in our proposed tower will bring up many other factors that we have to consider that may or may not work for our network. The fourth UBS is whether or not the tower is constructible. And as you can imagine, there are a lot of construction concerns that we have to look at to make sure that each one of these towers are going to be constructible and also work for our network. Certain factors that come into play. Do I have power and telco connections nearby? If it's a rooftop, do I have enough horizontal separation between the antennas? We have different frequencies that we work with in order to power different phones and different data uses or telephone uses from each of our antennas, and I have to make sure that those frequencies aren't interfering with each other. Is the structure structurally sound to hold the antennas? Are there any underground utility easements that will limit the placement of my facility? There were a couple of locations that I will get into in a minute within the Westin Resort that I had to rule out due to construction concerns that made this tower incompatible to fill this particular gap in coverage. The last UBS that I look at is regulatory compliance, and while that's an issue on other towers, it is not an issue on this particular site, so that I won't go into it any further in this one. So once I have satisfied the five UBS, which, as I have just stated, there are a lot of factors that go into each one of those different UBS, then, and AT&amp;T has approved my recommended candidate, I'm then ready to start working on my zoning application. And when I file that application, I do so with... And when I file that application, I do so with two main pillars of proof in mind, in accordance with federal law. Number one, I have to show that I have a significant gap in coverage, and that gap in coverage has been shown by the propagation maps that Mr. Cop has recently shown us. And number two, we can tell by the customer complaints that have arisen in Rancho Mirage that we obviously have a significant gap in coverage in this area that we are attempting to fill. Number two that I need to show in order to satisfy federal law is I need to show that this is the least visually obtrusive means to fill my gap in coverage. Now, several factors can certainly be considered by city officials to make a determination as to what is the least intrusive means. I brought up the five U-balls previously to show the different factors that can be considered to effectively rule out possibilities. This slide shows my search ring overlaying on the Rancho Mirage zoning map. So as I said, the city has a preference of locating cellphone towers in commercial zones, and as you can see by this map, I only have one possibility of where to locate this tower, and that would be in the Weston Resort without intruding on a residential neighborhood. Let's see. I was asked at Planning Commission whether or not I had considered any other locations for this specific tower. I answered in the negative, interpreting that question as "had I considered any other properties?", which I had not, because all other properties are located in residential zones. However, I do feel like it is critical in this situation to mention all of the different locations that were considered within the Weston Resort. Our team did walk the length of the Weston Resort on more than one occasion. Also, the two previous applications that were filed with the city included several different possible locations, and with all of the different disciplines and parties involved that come together to determine the location of this particular tower, we have to find a location that works for everybody. So if you look at the map up, these are all of the different locations that we considered just for this one particular application, not including the locations that were applied for in two previous occasions. I don't know that you want me to go through each of the different reasons why each of these locations didn't work. I would like to go through a couple of them. The first location that we had possibly looked at, and which was also the subject of our most recent application that was not constructed, was over the main lobby of the hotel. And the main reason why we ruled this out is due to the structural integrity of the rooftop. It was such that AT&amp;T would basically need to tear out the entire rooftop of the lobby of the hotel and rebuild the lobby in order for it to hold the weight of our antennas. We felt that the construction would cause a significant intrusion to the hotel, possibly affecting revenues of the hotel and also revenues of tourism for the city. Also, due to the increase in demand in technology over the last five years, there was also not enough height at this previous location, as this location would have provided us about a 50-foot top of antenna. The current structure that we are proposing is at 60 feet, so as you saw by the previous propagation maps that were put up, this new location will work much better for our signal. Another option that was just recently brought up is just to the other side of the tennis courts. The main reason why this location did not work for us is we talked with the ownership of the hotel, and unfortunately, they have development plans for this area that will make the tower unfeasible for them in that area. Also, I feel it prudent to bring up that moving the tower to that location will bring the tower just as close to the incoming Dell Webb residence as it is currently proposed to the residence on Sunningdale. So again, I'm happy to go over the rest of the reasons as to why a lot of these other locations didn't work. Some of them are possible, but again, after going through all of the different disciplines, all of the different factors, and everything that we need to consider, all the different parties involved, AT&amp;T feels strongly that we have done our homework on this site, and we have proposed the best possible location with the least obtrusive means. We're proposing a beautiful clock tower that is located perfectly within the tennis courts and looks like an integral part of the architecture and design and features of the current Weston Resort.
Excuse me.
Yes.
As long as we have some time, why don't you go through all the other locations also?
Absolutely.
So everyone is clear?
Okay.
As to why they were rejected?
Absolutely, no problem. Can we get the last slide back up there? Thank you.
Could you go back to the one you just covered, which you said was not acceptable to the Weston Hotel?
Correct. So that would be possible clock tower location number five, and that was the most recent location that was offered to me by Mr. Smith and also Mr. Gleam had requested that we consider this location. We talked with the ownership of the hotel, and they unfortunately have plans for development for that particular area, and so they declined to allow us to move the tower to that location. But the second reason why we felt that was not the best location for that tower is because it would be just as close, using my Google Web ruler, it would be approximately 150 feet from the new Dell Webb community. So there's only about a 10-foot difference between how close the tower would be to residences now and how close the tower would be to the residences that will be built in the Dell Webb community. Location number two, our RF engineers determined that the signal was a little bit too far to the east to preferably fill their gap in coverage. The propagation signals would have been a little bit less, and we felt like there was obstructions in the way to the west, the building kind of in the middle of the map up to the north. One of our azimuths or antenna directions would be shooting directly into that hotel, and as the signal goes out, it goes down, it goes out and down, so we were afraid that the propagation of the signal would not be as effective in this location number two as it would be in other possible locations. Option number three is the west-facing cupola just to the left of the main lobby. That's location was not tall enough. It was actually shorter than... Yes, thank you. Where's that coming from? Thank you, Mr. Cop. That is location number three. That location was determined not to have enough height to sufficiently fill our gap in coverage. Option number four is a possible flagpole location. We did also look at that location. The problem with flagpoles is we can't get the optimal number of antennas within a flagpole that we need to fill our gap in coverage. We are proposing a total of 12 antennas for this project, and the maximum number of antennas that we can get within the flagpoles would be nine. That would be three separate flagpoles, and they would be about four feet in diameter. So again, that was not the optimal proposal to fill our gap in coverage. Let's see. I talked about number five previously. That was the one that would impede the hotel's future development. Option number six, we considered a rawland... Excuse me, I'm using industry terms. We considered a clock tower proposal also in this location, and it was determined that the west-facing antenna azimuth sector would be blocked by the main hotel, and so that location was not preferable to our RF engineers. Option number seven, we considered not only a rooftop location here, but also a possible clock tower location. This location had major construction concerns. We didn't have proper access to that area without tearing up a large portion of the resort. Option number eight was another either possible clock tower location, or we did look at a rooftop location in this area as well. There is slightly lower elevation, and the obstructions in the way being the main lobby over the hotel, as it is a little bit taller than this location, would block our antenna signal to the east, and so we ruled out this possibility. The last one, possible clock tower location number nine, there is another maintenance yard over in this area, but again, we determined that the obstructions in the way with the hotel being to the west, our main sectors are heading to the southwest, the northwest, and then we've got one going northeast. And so the antenna sector facing to the northwest would be somewhat blocked by the hotel in that area. Also, again, we felt like this location would be just as close to the incoming Dell Webb community as the current proposed location. So again, we feel like we have really gone in and done our research and done our homework, and we feel like for all the parties involved and all the factors involved, we feel like we have proposed the best possible location for this tower, and we urge that city council members hopefully agree with us. We feel like we have worked very closely with the Planning Commission, with the Architectural Review Board. We have modified the looks and aesthetics of our tower to fulfill all of the requests that the city staff has provided to us. We did also receive a positive view from the Planning Commission as well. That concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions that you have before I invite up another member of AT&amp;T to just quickly finish our presentation.
Okay. Can you please go back to the last slide where you have all the spots located?
Absolutely.
Okay. I believe that there are a couple of parking structures, perhaps, where there's nothing that is noted as a possible site that might have been investigated? Was a parking structure investigated?
So the tallest structure on the property right now is the main lobby with the dome. That particular structure is 49 feet. The parking structures are lower than the main lobby of the hotel, so in order to make the parking structures tall enough, we would probably need to add about another 30 feet in order to fill our gap in coverage. I believe they're about three stories. I'm looking for the general manager right now, but I can tell you that they're not as tall as the main lobby. The main lobby is the tallest structure on the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions that I can answer?
Could you address the issue again with Dell Webb and the proximity of that property to one of the sites?
So I don't have a plan for the Dell Webb community. What I saw online and from the roads that appear to be coming in, the distance between the proposed tower in these other three locations that I mentioned would be approximately 150 feet from any potential homes there. That's not just to the end of the road, but I gave leeway for about a 20-foot setback. So from the edge of our proposed tower in these other three locations, going up to the Dell Webb community on the other side, it would be approximately 150 feet. And right now, we're 137 feet from the Sunningdale homes on the opposite side.
Was that distance closest to the actual residences or the road going into Dell Webb?
The road going into Dell Webb.
So we don't know what the distance was?
I don't know what the exact distance would be, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, are you planning for any other cell companies to have their antennas adjoining yours?
This tower is structurally capable to hold other carriers' antennas. That would be a discussion between the city, the property owner, and the other wireless carriers, but it will be constructed in a manner that it could be able to hold other carriers' antennas if they so desired.
But you have no other carriers at this time?
Not really.
Have you been approached by other carriers at this time?
No, I have not.
Okay. Thank you.
Dana, do you have any questions? Can you tell us, do you... Do you work for AT&amp;T, or do you work for some other company?
I work for a company called Smartlink LLC.
Spell it, please.
Smartlink, S.M.A.R.T.L.I.N.K., LLC Limited Liability Company. AT&amp;T contracts with my company, Smartlink. We do leasing and zoning for cellphone towers.
Approximately how many years have you been contracting with AT&amp;T to provide these services?
I have been doing this for 15 years, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, Iris? Okay. Thank you very much.
I would like to invite up Julio Figueroa. He is also with AT&amp;T. He is our External Affairs Director, and he will just piggyback on what I have already stated. Thank you so much for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Council, city leadership and staff. My name is Julio Figueroa. I'm the Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T. I also sit on...
Say that again a little slower.
My name is Julio Figueroa. I'm the Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T, and I believe Christie also has my card, and I can leave more cards after we leave today. I also sit on the board of the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I also chair the Business Legislative Council for the Chamber as well. And since you asked a question about how many years she's worked for Smartlink, I've been with AT&amp;T for 20 years this December. My office is at Riverside. My role and my position with the company is government relations and community outreach, and I support Riverside and Samaritan Counties. So I would be your point of contact and nature for anything related to AT&amp;T moving forward. So why is AT&amp;T building a cell site in Rancho Mirage? And why is AT&amp;T building cell sites, let's say, anywhere in the United States? And the number I'd like to share with leaders of the community is 370,000 percent, and that is a percentage of our data usage since 2007 when the iPhone launched. So people are not, no longer just calling and texting on their cellphones, but now they're doing their work on tablets, on phones, emailing, third-party applications, video transmission, and that is the reason why we continue to design our network because of customer demand. And I'd like to thank the folks that are in the crowd here, AT&amp;T customers, thank you, and for the ones that will potentially be AT&amp;T customers, thank you as well. We look to do business with you as well. I want to thank staff for their support as we completed this application, and as you've heard, there's a lot of concessions that we need to make in order to make the city happy and staff happy in order for them to approve an application like this. So I want to address that importance of being able to work with jurisdictions like this to address needs. And for us, as a company, our goal is to develop a network that addresses gaps in coverage, but not only gaps in coverage, also capacity, and these are issues that also the city of Rancho Mirage, I'm sure, deals with on a regular basis, when you have to do traffic on your roads. Do that by taking it through additional lane changes or even possibly optimizing your streetlights. That's no different than what AT&amp;T is with this network. We're responding to network demand, and we're having to build our infrastructure based on that, and that needs additional infrastructure like these macro sites. And I'm very proud with the design that was submitted to the city, because that is a higher-end site that AT&amp;T normally builds. We normally build the palm trees or something differently, but this is a higher-end design that we believe it's pleasing to the eye, and will also accomplish the goal we want is to provide better coverage and a capacity to the residents of the area. I also like to let the city council know, if they were not aware, that AT&amp;T is going to be the exclusive provider for FirstNet. And FirstNet, what it is, is the first countrywide wireless network to serve first responders, public responders, police and fire. And as this infrastructure and this network is going through its evolution stages, we will continuously need capacity to address the needs of our public safety folks, and to be a network that they will not be competing with your normal commercial user. This is a dedicated network that will provide priority and preemption during a natural disaster so that they can communicate amongst each other during that incident. And so these macro cell sites will all be candidates for our FirstNet network, and so when you think about what AT&amp;T is doing at the local level for a cell site, not only is it addressing the gap in coverages for folks that are doing their social media, their work, their communication needs, but it'll also fit the needs of our first responders as they sign to this first network, which again, will be the only exclusive for us countrywide network across the United States. So again, thank you for hanging us, and I'll be around to ask any questions, and I can answer any questions right now as well.
Dana, yes? Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question.
Yes.
By the way, they tell me you didn't create a conflict of interest. I have an AT&amp;T symbol right up here on my cellphone. So I'm with you. I want the best coverage possible.
Right.
Consistent with what's... Uh, consistent with what's best for the community, individuals who live at or near.
I think, I think the city, you know, when they take positions of, of, uh, reasonability in regarding allowing carriers to come construct in their, their jurisdictions, you're not, you're not picking winners and losers. You know, you're making it open, and this will only result in additional investments from all the four carriers. So, you are not picking just AT&amp;T to provide service in Rancho, but, you know, this, this should be, uh, on a, on a playing field so that the other three carriers are providing coverage for your residents. I mean, I'd love to, love to have all your residents of Rancho Mirage to be all AT&amp;T customers, but we know it's not. And, uh, as, as you, as you allow us to do this, I think it opens up the doors for other of the carriers to also address gaps in coverage.
You made, you made the comment that your only objective is to provide good service for AT&amp;T customers, which I assume is right, and, and you'll make a decent living out of it. Is there any other general objective or specific objective that you have beyond that?
No, so our, our network is, is designed primarily through its macro cell sites, and these are, these would be considered a macro cell site, our large infrastructure sites. But this is only preparing us for the next evolution of our network, which is small cells, which will densify the network at a local level, and, uh, I don't want to open up another kind of room on discussion, but those meetings will be happening only in the, at the end of this year, beginning of next year, to be able to address also the gaps in covers at the local level, or that, that will address the generation network. We're going to need not only the macro sites, but the small cells to, uh, to, uh, address the gaps in coverages, the need for, uh, additional data. So, with that said, yes, macro site sites are going to be here, they're going to be here for a very long time, and they're going to also be used to, uh, densify the network in our small cells that's coming, probably in the next year or so. These, uh, small cells have already launched in, I would say, the western part of Southern California, and it's starting to come out to the east. I've had about eighteen meetings with local jurisdictions in the island empire, all negotiating agreements regarding small cells and, uh, processes and applications. So, this is only setting, setting up Rancho Mirage, uh, to, for the next step of the, of all the carriers' networks.
Do you find that when you go from city to city, that, uh, the, uh, the residents of the city are also concerned not only about good cell service, but also concerned about proximity of buildings or locations where you have your, uh, equipment?
So, I've been doing this job for five years, and I think, little by little, it's, it's less contentious every time I, I go to a hearing. Uh, the residents are, are embracing the fact, those concerns will always come up, and, um-
When they do, when they do come up, what do you try to do to alleviate the issue of the problem?
You know, so we've had, if you're speaking, uh, for health concerns, we've actually-
No, I'm not speaking about health concerns.
Okay.
That's against the law.
Uh, correct, correct.
So, we won't talk about health, but-
I, I think during the application process, you know, the consultants that we hire, I get involved when there's a roadblock, when the application is pretty much stopped and there's no movement. Um, so I'll get a call from the consultant, "Hey, can you get involved? We need your help." And I just sit and kind of talk with the, uh, jurisdiction about the importance of having this cell site and why we need to put it there. Again, like I said earlier, there's no, it's no different than what cities have to do with when they have to address problems with traffic, when they need additional roads and, and, uh, additional resources to, to, to address their traffic concerns. We're, we're dealing the same, we're dealing with the same thing. We're addressing traffic concerns on our data network, and this is all caused by customer use. You know, it's, it's not like we're picking Rancho Mirage because we want to just, "Oh, we've got nothing else to do, let's go ahead and put a cell site right here," and, you know, if customer, if residents are upset about it, so be it, right?
Well, you're doing it for your own business interests, too, I would assume. You've got poor coverage in a certain area-
And that's exactly why.
-it's a very large area, and it's a growing area, and you don't want to have poor coverage because people will be, uh, moving to Verizon or other-
Correct, correct. And I, and I think that's, that's safe to say that all carriers are doing that, right? Want to be able to have the best coverage everywhere and be the, the reason why they, they wouldn't want a customer to lose with coverage, so we're certainly having to address that.
Okay. Uh-
Mr. Mayor?
You talk about, uh, additional small cell sites that will be needed.
Yeah.
Um, could you tell us about how much coverage this tower is going to provide?
So, generally-
Percentage-wise?
So, generally, the, the lar- a large macro cell site will give you about two miles of service. The small cells, which would be a streetlight, uh, infrastructure-
When you say large or small, she used the number five G. She said, "Maybe it won't be five G."
No, no, I'm referring to coverage for a site like this.
The coverage that you're proposing.
So, yeah, so the, the- The network on a large macro cell site, the signal it gives out is about two miles in radius, and a small cell on a streetlight would be about a thousand to fifteen hundred feet.
So, you're saying that there'll be two, two miles of coverage from this tower?
Right.
So, that should, that should cover a hundred percent of all of-
Well, you saw the designs, right? We would have proposed something a little bit higher, and it probably would have gotten closer to that hundred percent. But because of the concession we had to make to lower that cell site, it does, it does bring that percentage down a little lower, but I think that's where we have to make a concession with the city and what they will allow and what, what that will deliver in regards to better coverage.
So, what would your estimate be as far as the coverage that would be obtained?
Uh, I, I think based on, we're looking at the math and what RF said, I think we're at about ninety percent of coverage.
Okay.
It, that, I mean, what we would like would be that eighty-foot pole. I mean, the, the higher we go, I think in most cases, the better coverage, but we understand that a lot of these jurisdictions cap the height and how, how high we can go, so, and we understand this, and that's why this one, those concessions are made.
Okay, and then you're talking about some, adding some additional, uh, small cell sites in the future.
Yeah, and that's down the road. I'm, I'm, I'm sure I'll be meeting with leadership as soon as I find out that that will be deployed out in the valley, and, uh, so that'll be at a, at a, at a higher level, um, with, with all the cities involved in regards to what we offer in, in designs.
And so for how, how, how soon do you think that'll be coming down the pike?
Uh, like I said, probably the end of this year, beginning of, of, uh, two thousand and nineteen, where we'll start discussions. Generally, it's about six to eight months. By then, we actually hold that meet, and we have a final agreement signed. So, that's why we want to kind of start as early as possible before we know we're going to start constructing, because we know a lot of that, a lot of that time is spent, um, you know, with the, with the agreement and compromising and redlining back and forth.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, did you have a question?
Um, just because any of, um, the council members up here have, um, AT&amp;T as a service provider doesn't make them, doesn't create a conflict of interest unless they're paying for it. And if you guys are, then I'm switching from Verizon.
I don't believe we are.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Uh, Christie, you want to open it up to public comments, please?
Certainly, Mayor. So, our first speaker is Tom Nolan.
My name's Tom Nolan. I live in the Lakefront One community of Mission Hills, not too far from, uh, your other council member. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am against, uh, this particular location within the Mission Hills Resort. I think it does intrude on the views, and then, although there's no right to a view in California, but it does intrude for existing residences. Uh, I think it will affect the value of those residences. Whether in fact, and I know we can't talk about, or you can't talk about, health, but whether in fact microwave issues cause health or not, there's perception that it does, and people who know there's a microwave tower there, it may affect their decision on whether to buy one of these existing houses. Uh, just as an aside, after listening to this, I don't really care about the people across the street. Those houses aren't built yet. You know, the people who have houses already, they can't make a change now. Their houses are there, they're in on them. So, along those lines, I think that should have been considered. Secondly, uh, the value of the property of the Westin is going to be enhanced by this. How? They're going to receive lease payments from AT&amp;T. Uh, when you value a commercial property, you basically take all the income in that property, then a net income, and generally put some sort of cap rate on it or do a cash flow analysis. So, you have the Westin property, you're going to get an increase in value. You have our residents, uh, probably maybe going to experience a decrease in value. I don't think that is the right way to do this. We talked about, I've heard all talk about coverage and service, uh, you know, how the service. I have Verizon. I've had it for a lot of years. I have service where I live. The fact that it's taken AT&amp;T fifteen, twenty years to recognize that they don't have a good sign on this area is a business decision they made. Apparently more so, I just found out they've been afoot for, uh, towers on this site, but opted not to build them yet. So, they're making a business decision, "Okay, now there's enough customers here, guys. Let's build our tower now." I don't think they're using tamarisk, tamarisk trees to, uh, to, gonna plant new tamarisk, uh, trees. I think that's a, is that, is that correct? There, there's no new tamarisk trees being planted here, are there?
Tamarisk, do we prohibit tamarisk trees?
That's what I thought, that's why-
Because of the vast amount of water they consume? I thought that at some point in time, we had some kind of an ordinance against them.
The Mission Hills, what was, they, they had to take them down all along, all along DuVal, I'm told by one of our landscape people a lot of years ago, and they are very water user. And somebody mentioned they thought they were going to use some tamarisk trees here, but when I saw the presentation, I did not see that. So, if that's the case, I, I'm not, that's not a point that we should dwell on.
Mr. Mayor, um, if I might, um, we don't permit tamarisk trees to be installed. There are existing tamarisk trees there, and they're not being removed, but the new trees are, uh, for consumac.
Yeah. Those issues I wish to have. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Jean Reniker.
Thank you for hearing me. I, my name is Jean Reniker, and I am also a homeowner in the Lakefront One, um, uh, phase of Mission Hills. My husband and I bought a house about a year ago, and we remodeled it from living in, uh, up north, and quickly figured out we couldn't reach our contractor by phone because he had AT&amp;T. So, not for the usual reasons, but apparently it is a running joke in Mission Hills. If you have AT&amp;T coverage, you're basically out of luck, and we found this certainly to be true. So, we moved into the home six, six months ago, and, um, again, that certainly is true, and I, I won't belabor the issues that not having coverage presents, that I think that's been done well already. As far as, uh, the proposed clock tower being an eyesore, if it's true to the rendering as we saw, I would disagree. I think it's, I think it's very aesthetically pleasing. I, 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 I won't address health concerns. I, I understand that can't be taken into consideration, other than to say that I have, uh, referenced the American Cancer Society website, and they do not feel that this is an issue other than the handheld device itself. So, um, I would ask that the city council please move forward on this. There's nothing to suggest that, um, a site relocation would improve, uh, the end result. This has been such an ongoing dilemma for us. It's virtually impossible to conduct any type of business with any reliability. We have since put in a landline, uh, to offset that, and, but that really isn't, hasn't been the greatest, um, result either. And we enjoy our gracious way of living here in Rancho Mirage, but this has sort of been a, 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 not as bright spot. So, if you would be so kind as to address this, my family and I would be so grateful. Thank you.
Mrs. Reniker, are, are you supporting this development?
Yes, supporting it.
Okay, thank you.
Heartfully.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Mason Grigsby.
Uh, Mason Grigsby from Rancho Mirage. I live in Lakefront Two. Uh, we have formed a little ad cop, ad hoc committee to talk about the cell tower issues, and there's some misconceptions I can, I think about our position. Number one, uh, we are not against the cell tower. Uh, the concerns that we have with the people that are close to it, and the reason Ted recused himself is he's in the great line of sight of that tower. But we do believe, whether it's legal or not, understand it's not. Perception is by people, there's a health issue. There are over two hundred scientists around the world that think it is. And you can have, I'm an old guy, so when I hear from government agencies that it's safe, uh, and if you think that, and anyone here, I've got a warehouse of asbestos and lead paint that I'll be happy to sell you for your next remodel. So, I'm cynical. I don't believe a lot of what the government tells us. So, excuse me for that position, but you gotta know where I'm coming from. So, we have some concerns about health. Now, you don't have to consider that. One of the things that just happened is Jerry Brown just vetoed a bill, and it was a bill by the communications companies to let them put cell towers wherever they wanted without restraint. He vetoed that bill recently, and the reason he did it is he said, "I want cities to have their own option to put cell towers where they feel they should be." So, he gave a green light to you to put cell towers where you want to, and that's from the governor at this moment. Till we get a new governor, that's his position. And I'd like to make one other, a little bit of a similar situation. There was a Wall Street Journal about five G towers across the country, and I want to read one comment about Denver. And effectively, what they said, they were putting cell towers everywhere, and people were objecting. And what the Denver City Council did was they put a halt to it. They went to this AT&amp;T and said, or in this case, it was Verizon, actually, and asked them, and they negotiated a settlement. They took out some of the cell towers, and they, the communications company said, "We want to work with the community to do the right thing." Now, I suspect the, the football team in back of me from AT&amp;T, uh, the two gentlemen that got up, I'm sure were linebackers at one time, uh, have converted to the business world, but at least they did say, "We want to work with the community." And I believe that to be true. I know that the city council wants to do the best things for people that live here, and some of you have relatives and kids that may live in Mission Hills, so understand, it's not legal to look at the health issues, but there are lots of reasons. You can have in the back of your mind, you can still do it. The governor says you can do it, all these cities, Denver said you can do it, Miami said you can do it, and they are doing it. So, all I ask is you consider those. You don't have to officially agree to a health issue, but at least I think is worth your time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Tyler Carey.
I think that's me. Tyler Kent, actually, with Smartlink and AT&amp;T, just reading a letter from a resident on behalf of them, um, so standing as their proxy. Uh, this is from James and Susan Eckberg, um, and they write, "My wife and I live at Mission Hills at ten-six-fourteen Wibleden Drive for over five months of the year and have AT&amp;T cellphone subscriptions and fully support the proposed cellphone tower. Our support is overwhelming for the placement of this tower in the current, in that the current reception that we have at and around our home is less than adequate. Our calls are dropped continually due to poor reception, and a great majority of the time, if we need to make a call, we're forced outside or to walk around a different place on the property to have that conversation." Uh, in bold letters, he writes, "Because of the poor reception, we are at risk in an emergency situation. The placement of the cell tower, I believe, will help ensure that we have adequate reception and not continue to be put at risk in case of emergency." You might ask why we don't change carriers. Uh, the answer is that we switched to AT&amp;T from T-Mobile because we had no reception. Uh, we had reception the majority of the time in Mission Hills area. Uh, AT&amp;T provides this wonderful coverage outside of Mission Hills and all around the world. Uh, please vote positively, uh, for the tower so that we may have the comfort of knowing that our cellphones will operate without problems in normal and also emergency situations. Thank you, James and Susan.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Garth Nalaweg.
Garth Nalaweg from, uh, Tamarisk area of Rancho Mirage. Um, I'm a property manager, and I do my business between Rancho Mirage and Palm Springs, and more and more of my business is using my phone. I'm, you know, doing contracts on my phone- I'm, you know, doing contracts on my phone, et cetera, you know, answering and scheduling, you know, people to come at properties and so forth. And I started a petition in May for better cellphone coverage in Ranch Mirage because I just couldn't hack it anymore, the bad coverage that we have. And I know I'm speaking to the choir, I know everybody is aware of this problem, but I wanted people to have a voice. And so since May, I have had 346 signatures on my petition, 123 of them from residents who identified as Ranch Mirage, 70 from other valley cities, 16 from other California cities, 129 just identified as other cities in the US or in the US, and seven from Canada, for a total of 346. Oh, one was international, I had somebody from South Africa. My guess is that a lot of these people who identified as in other places have homes here or have visited here and have been affected by it. Excuse me, losing my voice. I'll read a few comments that people left on the petition, you know, to, so that we get, you know, "We're very much in favor of this tower," and these are some of the comments people made. Melissa Riche from Ranch Mirage, she said that "The cellphone coverage in Ranch Mirage is so bad that when a neighbor's alarm went off in the middle of the night, I had to go out into the street to call 911. It's so bad that Uber drivers can't find me, they can't get a GPS signal. It doesn't matter if I'm at home, at a restaurant, Highway 111, they say it's the only part of the valley where they can't get their Uber GPS signal. It's so bad that every time I'm on a cellphone call, it gets dropped within a minute. Our roads are beautiful, we enjoy many aspects of this city, but this is affecting our personal lives, business transactions, and everyday quality of life." All right, another one from Susan Hig from New York. "Really, in this day and age, I have a hard time getting calls through in the Ranch Mirage area. This isn't a cornfield in rural America. Get it together." All right. John DeVigiano from Cathedral City says, "Cellphone coverage has always been abysmal in Ranch Mirage. The Westin Mission Hills has had to bring in portable cell towers because their groups have complained about it. Do it now." I'm running out of time, so I can go on and on. You have copies, I think, of, of all these comments that I have. So we are very much in favor of this cellphone tower. We think it's beautiful. We don't think there are any health concerns. We would like the city, city council to think out of the box and to help us solve this problem, not wait for the carriers to solve it. Find some way to compel them to solve it. Give them tax breaks, build towers ourselves, you know, at the library, make it look like a, you know, observatory, something like that. You know, let's, let's solve, we need you to solve this problem more and more. We need cellphone coverage, everybody absolutely does.
That one was, that one was already taken.
All right. Yeah, so we, you know, we built fancy schools, really high-tech schools, you know, in, in this city, and we're paying for it. Thank you, we love living in this city, you know, we, I, you know, I'm not here to just complain, I'm thanking you for what a great place that we live in. But, you know, kids are going to school, and they have these high-tech facilities, and they step outside, and they're in a dead zone, and we wanted these people to stay and in our communities, to work here, to start businesses here, and to be, you know, help us be more successful. So, thank you, we're very much in favor of the cell tower. 346 people so far.
Thank you. What was the, the number of Ranch Mirage again?
Oh, just a second. 123 identified as Ranch Mirage, but you can see in the comments, other people who identified even as Canada, you know, "I live here six months," and so forth. And people who have second homes here now don't even want to get landlines, right? But they have to. One of my clients, you know, since I, you know, it's ridiculous, I can't get cellphone service, I had to put in a landline. It's extra cost, you know, and so forth.
Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
Kristi.
The next speaker is Parrish Phillips.
Hello, thank you, Mayor Kite and city council. I'm Parrish Phillips, the general manager at the Weston Mission Hills Resort and Villas. We're a vacation ownership property on the far east side of the Weston Mission Hills complex. We represent about 9,000 homeowners, and on behalf of the homeowners association and all of our guests, our AT&amp;T coverage is very poor on the property. Cell coverage, period, on other carriers as well, but AT&amp;T specifically. And a number of our owners and guests are using AT&amp;T. It's a significant challenge on the property as far as guest satisfaction, and not to mention, it was addressed on a few others that had spoken as well, just the emergency and safety concern that we have with not being able to dial 911 if needed, inside the room, having to go outside of the villa, find coverage to where you actually can place a call. It's, it's really long overdue, and we strongly support it. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
The next speaker is Lou Faria.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Lou Faria, and 15 years ago, we decided that we wanted to build a second home down here in the valley. We looked around at different cities and decided on Ranch Mirage because you offered so many more amenities, your parks, your emergency service, and everything else. We did build a home, but we were not aware of the poor cellphone service. So what good is these emergency services going to do us if we can't get through to them? Also, I realize, I just began thinking, we have the alarm system. If that does not signal to the alarm company that we have an intruder or a fire, what good is that going to do? So we're greatly compromised by not having good service from the AT&amp;T. When I, a lot of calls I don't get through on my cellphone, and when I'm driving around the city, then all of a sudden, I'll get a signal that there's a message there, that I hit a pocket where I do get the message, and I realize that I've received a message that I didn't hear at my home. And so when I call back, I always start a conversation. I'm down here, I'm probably going to be dropped, because I would say way over 50% of my calls are dropped when I do call, and I always start with, "We may not end this conversation without being dropped. Just wait, and I'll keep trying, and I'll call you back." I always start with that, so they know that I'm not hanging up on them rudely. I guess I've never seen a proposal for a cell tower like this one. I think, I mean, instead of those ugly trees or palm trees, this is magnificent, and I think it is a great asset to our city. So I just hope that all of you will support this. And my question is, if it is approved, I guess it, you have the right to approve it this afternoon, if it is approved, and then go ahead, when will this service be available? When will it be built? What timeframe are we talking about?
Ask him, he's right behind you.
Okay, well, when he comes up, he'll tell us, okay? So that's one of my questions. The sooner the better, but it is just so frustrating. I've lost so many business calls. I was not well about three months ago, and when I called, I was waiting all afternoon, the doctor was supposed to call me back, and I did not receive that call till I finally called them, and they said the doctor was trying to get through to me. So it is a big health issue, so please approve this. Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Tom Scaramellino.
Ladies and gentlemen, city staff, guests, thank you for the opportunity to readdress you today. Wasn't too long ago, we were at the planning commission, and I provided an official statement. Today, I'd just like to speak a little bit off the cuff, if I could, if that's all right with you. As many of you know, in 2006, I was fortunate to live here for a short time as the director of food and beverage at this wonderful resort that I proudly leave today at the Weston Mission Hills as a general manager. And at that time, in 2006, cell service was an unbelievable issue for our sales team in order to generate business. You see, AT&amp;T is a Goliath company, as many of you, as being stockholders evidently have shown. It's a Goliath company in that many of our customers, Big Pharma, manufacturing, tech, all their employees are given phones and are, have cell service that is provided by AT&amp;T. There isn't a month that goes by that we don't have a site visit the hotel, thinking of bringing business, a Fortune 5 company or something, to the property, and the person visiting from the company can't use their own phone to reach back to their office or something. There's no doubt in our mind that that puts our sales team at a major disadvantage, and shame on the leadership of the hotel not to try to address this problem over the last 10 years. I made it a mission when I came back on property that I was going to be the general manager that finally fixed the AT&amp;T dilemma at the resort, and I'm hoping very much so that we have, have your support. My colleague Parrish at the Villas mentioned to you the safety issues. We have 200 acres of golf courses that surround our, our resorts, and these golf courses very often are played by single people in shoulder-in-summer months, late in the afternoons, with not a lot of residents as home around the golf course. And one has to worry, if there was ever an emergency out there in the expanse of these golf courses, how these people are going to seek help and assistance should there be an emergency. So I ask that you consider that. Our, the previous guest mentioned the lack, one of the speakers mentioned the lease, potential lease payments that the resort, the lease payments are minuscule to the amount of business that we let go to other cities in the, in the valley because of our lack of ability to provide cell service at the resort. So thank you for your time today.
Tom, can I ask you one question?
Yes.
You asked the question, how you can help us. There's a particular site on the course that we talked about tonight, and it was said that they couldn't go further with the site because of the Westin. Are there sites that are unacceptable for the hotel?
Yeah, the, Alexa spoke correctly in that, you know, I was, I drove around with them. We, we exhausted looking at potential locations, and I would go back to ownership, and she did mention the particular site that the team, the staff, wanted us to look at down by the tennis gardens. We pushed it, we pushed it with the ownership. Years ago, and it's not a current development, years ago, there was thought of a, another type of entity down there, perhaps maybe transitioning the tennis gardens into a water park, which would help us during the summer and things along those conditions, and they don't want to give up that possibility, because we're building an expensive tower. If we ask them to move it because of development needs on the property, it, it, it's going to be literally impossible for at least five to 10 years until there's some kind of ROI back on that facility. That's what's making it difficult.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions?
Tom, could you just tell us what kind of development you're planning for that one area?
I, like I mentioned, it was a, when I mentioned to them that ownership said no because of the potential development, it was the fact that over the course of the last 10 years of their ownership, host hotels and resorts, they had looked at that site to repurpose for other purposes, but there's nothing currently definitely in, in the plans.
And nothing where, could be built where a cell communications could be adapted to fit into that development?
Not that it's going to be very disruptive to the resort. I mean, we looked at a couple of locations around the pools, out in the middle of the golf course. You're talking about bringing in heavy equipment, digging it up, the loss of business and things that, that were going on. We, we exhausted it. It's not, unfortunately, I, listen, it doesn't have to be at the resort. I, you build it anywhere, build it at the observatory, build it anywhere. I need better cell service to run my hotel and to be able to provide, to compete in this marketplace. I, it's not, it's not that important to us that we be the ones that take the burden of disappointing neighbors, and I'm in the hospitality business, I don't want to do that. But I know this will serve our associates and our community better than what's at hand right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, our next speaker is Barclay Fritz.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Fritz Barclay. I am from Switzerland. I live now at Trilogy. So become, being a Swiss, I want to be very neutral in my presentation and not swing one way or another. But yesterday night, my wife called me on the TV and said, "Fritz, there is something on TV that might be of interest to you." I think City of Ranch Mirage is really not knowing what they're going to do. So I listened to the presentation. Probably I have to say to you, I am professor of environmental science, and I teach problems with water, air, and I can tell you, ladies and gentlemen, electromagnetic fields is a very high topic in higher education, master's program, PhD program where I teach. Perhaps your future resident here will come with a, with a meter and try to meet, measure the electromagnetic fields where they go and move in. I can be, I can tell you that my meter says, "Here you're running at 1 milligauss in terms of electromagnetic fields. 3 is the assumed threshold, so you're doing fine. No problems." But if I go with this to a 5G tower, the level go up. It's scary, and we are going to face this in the future. So if you have to make a decision now, I mean, so much time was spent on selling you this tower. I like your questions, Mr. Horbert. You think deep, because how about, besides building the tower, by the way, the tower, the microwaves don't care whether it's a nice tower or not, they go right through. And so they don't care, they don't care much about the trees, they go right through. And so I urge you, before you make a decision, I also would like to let the community of Ranch Mirage know that there is a fantastic CD out there, a compelling wake-up call about the health risks of our wireless world. It's shown US-wide, I show it to the, it's called Generation Zap. Look at this, think what you heard about all the discussions, and then make a decision. Also buy yourself a meter, $100, but you can see suddenly something you can't see. I tell my students, ladies and gentlemen, when we talk about electromagnetic fields, that this is knowledge which is the organ of sight. If you did put your head into a bowl of pie soup, and if you could make the electromagnetic fields visible, you would see nothing. I'm on time, I'm Swiss, so I finish at this point in time. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
The next speaker is Haney Chu.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Ranch Mirage, a part-time resident. I have many guests that come to visit me. Most of my guests are from an area that they use A&amp;T, AT&amp;T, because it is one of the best carriers of their locality. They get no service at my home, and I live in Mission Hills. One time, there was an emergency, tried to use their phone to get help, we had to run and find my phone, which I use a different carrier. It was a wake-up call. We need help here immediately. Very life-threatening situation. I urge you to consider putting this in because it is an urgent matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Doug Jones.
My name is Doug Jones. I don't even live in Ranch Mirage. I'm fortunate enough to drive through it. Drive from Palm Springs, or from Palm Desert to Palm Springs once a day. And when I heard about this hearing, I, I had to participate because my cellphone coverage, when I pass... when I pass Home Depot or Pet Smarter, you know, right over there gets weak, and by the time I hit the area in front of the Westin, it's dead. I used to have business meetings at the Westin, at the Seasons Grill, and the people that I meet with, they wouldn't want to meet me there because they couldn't get coverage. And they needed coverage with a cellphone. And I've seen pictures of this tower. It's beautiful. And for the gentleman that was concerned about government information about how it doesn't affect your health, the American Cancer Society is not a US government organization. And they're relatively, from what I understand, very unbiased, and I don't know about the Swiss information with the little meter, but just common sense. I mean, I'm telling you, you proved this thing, and a year after, nobody's going to know it's there. It's going to just disappear. And everybody's going to get great cell service. So please, I'm in favor of it, and so are the other people. We may not live in Rancho Mirage, but we do business here, and we entertain here, and we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi, next.
Mayor, the last speaker card I have is from Mr. Brad Anderson.
Hi, Brad Anderson, Berber Drive, Rancho Mirage. I'm opposed to this. I just learned about it this morning. I had no idea about AT&amp;T not being, people in the Mission Lakes or Mission Hills area being able to receive signals or not receive signals. This is all new to me, so I had to make my opinion this morning. And my opinion is to oppose it because I think people that live around that are really the only ones that really should have a say in that. And you can make up 1,500 feet and go out from that, ask those people, line of sight, maybe. And they're the ones that they're going to have to look at that and be affected by that. And Mission Hills Resort, great resort. But again, this has been 10 years in the making, apparently, or up to that. And they've had opportunities to go ahead and put in these cell towers before. And of course, it's all money, you know, just follow the money. And you got DelReb going in, you got growth in the area, and it's feasible to do it now. And I'm all for Mission Hills ripping the top off the clubhouse or wherever and putting it in there if they want to. But the people that live around it, they're the ones most involved or most affected by it negatively or positively, and they're the ones that should really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're out of individuals who have turned in cards to speak. Is there anybody else in the audience who has not spoken today but would like to? Yes, please. Oh, we've got this side coming up first, and if you'd be next. If you can sit down and, sorry about the mix-up there.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, Mayor.
Good afternoon. Your name and address, please.
My name is Stephen Grant. I live at 58 Oak Tree Drive in the Mission Hills complex. I'm also the director of sales and marketing at the Westin. So I'm not completely unbiased in this, but.
Your name again?
Stephen Grant. One of my primary concerns and one of the things that I think is a little bit unfair is when I hear people talk about property values. I live in Mission Hills. My property value is diminished because we have poor cell service. So if we take the consideration of some people's property values and not others, I don't think that that's a fair way to look at this. So that's primarily what I wanted to say. Also, it does put us at a tremendous disadvantage from a sales perspective. Our competitors sell against us because of our poor coverage, which that means that that limits revenues for the hotel quite frequently because we lose groups to other hotels in other cities. And that TOT money goes to Palm Desert or La Quinta or Indian Wells. So that would help us solve that problem, would definitely help us drive revenues for the hotel, and it would make my life as a resident of Mission Hills significantly better. And that's all.
Thank you. Over here.
I normally see you early in the morning, Dana. Hi, my name is Dr. Mark Smith. I have a PhD in physiology, so I'm a little shocked that we're not allowed to talk about health. Kind of feel I've wasted my whole afternoon here. We've gone down a hole that we're never coming back from in technology. We're not going to go back. We want to go to 5G, everyone wants to do that. But I think along with that, we sort of owe ourselves as humanity an obligation to, you know, look at the risks. And this idea, I've spent the morning on the National Institutes of Health PubMed site, you can all do it. So this idea that there's no health ramifications from radio, you know, from radio frequency and electromagnetic radiation is nuts. The most recent study out of Italy, it's in rats, but they assimilated a tower for the lifetime of the rats at 1.8 gigahertz. AT&amp;T, is it 5G 15 gigahertz?
1 gig.
1 gigahertz?
Speed.
No, the, the.
I'd have to check.
Okay. I looked it up, I thought it was 15 gigahertz, but maybe I'm wrong. But anyway, bottom line is cancers galore, right? So that maps up with cellphone use, and this was an assimilation of a tower. So all I would ask is that those other sites, what I've seen here today, it sounded like money was being put in front of the location. And I would ask that to be readdressed again. If ultimately that is truly the only place that it could go, there are things humans can do to decrease, you can all go online and Google it, there are things we can do to decrease the radiation. So we, you can all take our own active role in that. So I'm not one, I'm not saying here today shouldn't have a tower. Everyone here that's sick of their cellphone reception being bad, I agree. I've dealt with it as well. And obviously, one could argue that the inability to make an emergency phone call would override, perhaps, a cancer developing over 10 years, for example. So I get that. But when I see the site, and one of my neighbors here, I'm in the Lakefront 2, the former committee is, he stated, we're not against the tower being built. And if that is truly the only location that it could go, I'd say, okay, fair enough, we'll do other things. But it sounded to me today that there were a couple of locations, the Westin just said, you know, they really want it? Well, maybe give something up. Give up that potential site that you were going to develop on, right? Give something up for the rest of the community who are concerned. I'm not concerned about the aesthetics, I agree. I think they've done a great job of the design. I think it looks really good. My only concern is the radiation. So I would say, and if you do look at the research, this is not a health issue, there's no question that distance is key. So every foot you go away from those residences could potentially help. Of maybe an unknown, true. But I would ask you to really look at those other locations in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. Is there anybody else in the audience over here on the right?
Were you this morning?
Obviously not.
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Zach Marks. I just bought a property at 624 Hospitality in Mission Hills Country Club. I am the director of the California Brain Tumor Association, have been a Chamber of Commerce CEO, and as I just mentioned, a brand-new resident here. I have lots of different concerns and I'm vehemently opposed to this cell tower being constructed in Mission Hills area. There's many different reasons why, the first one being health concerns. I know that it was mentioned that we shouldn't discuss that. We can discuss it, but I know you can't make your decision based upon it. As you just heard from the doctor, there are extreme concerns about health issues. My father was diagnosed with a brain tumor eight years ago. That's when I started this nonprofit that was directly attributed to his cellphone use. Second, according to an ad in Realtor Magazine, and I am a licensed Realtor as well, people don't want to live next to cellphone towers. Surprise, surprise. The Appraisal Journal found that buyers would pay as much as 20% less for a property if there's a cellphone tower in the area. This is a disclosure item on California Real Estate Forum, so when I go to sell my home in Mission Hills Country Club, I need to disclose that there's a cellphone tower within the vicinity. So it's not just about property value, but it's also about, you know, lots of other things. There's, once the cellphone tower is built, without community input, AT&amp;T can come back and raise the height another 20 feet without community consent. So when you hear 60 feet now, by the time it's built, it will probably be back up to 80 or 90 feet. Also, I was just mentioning overwhelmingly, 94% of homebuyers and renters surveyed said that they're less interested in a property that's located near a cellphone tower. With 1,000 survey respondents, 79% said that under no circumstances would they possibly ever buy or rent a property within a few blocks of a cellphone tower. 90% said they were concerned about the increasing number of cellphone towers. The Housing and Urban Development Department, HUD, considers cellphone towers hazards and nuisances. So it has to be put in the least intrusive area. Obviously, this is near all the residential homes, it's extremely intrusive, 100-some feet away from residential properties. You know, I was just shocked to hear that there's no setback requirements, there's no distance requirements whatsoever from residential properties, it's amazing to me. They need to prove that there's a significant gap in coverage. All those maps that you saw, they're just showing that there's a significant gap in AT&amp;T coverage. They don't talk about how there's good coverage from other companies. So the law states that they have to prove that there's no coverage whatsoever. But there is, if you're on Verizon or something like that. And then, I live in Mission Hills, I have AT&amp;T, I have no problem whatsoever with my cellphone service. I, I mean, no one here has mentioned Wi-Fi calling. If you have Wi-Fi in your house, you connect to it, your service is perfectly fine. You can put a cellphone booster on your home if you want to. You know, there's just so many things you can do. I urge you to vote no on this. Many counties and cities have voted against cellphone towers from Smartlink and from AT&amp;T. And I urge you to do the same because if you guys do pass this, I anticipate that I would, I just moved here, I'll probably put my home back on the market and move back to Indian Wells. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your email this morning, very interesting. Any, anybody else like to present a viewpoint? Okay, would the applicant like to rebuttal anything that was said or answer any additional questions?
I just, I just have two for the gentleman that mentioned that I played football. I had never played a minute of football in my life. I actually did ballet for four years in high school. I'm kidding about that, but no, no football. And on a serious note, the bill that the gentleman was speaking about that the governor vetoed was SB 649. And I'm sure the leadership was aware of that bill, which was passed through the Senate and the Assembly. So there was support to expedite the process of the small cell deployment in California. And Governor Brown did veto that bill with comments saying that he wanted local control back. And that was the reason why he vetoed the bill, but he was specifically talking about small cells, not the larger macro cell sites that we're talking about today. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last comment.
I will make my comments brief. I greatly appreciate all of your time this afternoon. I don't think there's too much more that needs to be said that has not already been addressed. I would just like to reiterate that AT&amp;T really does want to create a good public relation with not only AT&amp;T customers, but also potential AT&amp;T customers. And I would like to, again, stress that we did consider numerous possible locations. And it's not just the best location for AT&amp;T, but the very first thing that I consider is the request of the Rancho Mirage Planning Department. Not only the requests, but I look at your municipal code, and I look at your wireless ordinance, and I take all of these different factors into consideration when determining the best possible location for a cell tower. So we really feel like we have gone above and beyond to implement all of the suggestions, requirements from planning staff, from the planning commission, that have gone into the placement of this tower. There was one question that was brought up with regards to the timeframe with which we would like to build this tower. I would like to file for a building permit today, hoping that this outcome is favorable in our behalf. The building permit process typically takes about 60 days. I'm not sure exactly what it is in the city. And then the construction of the tower will be approximately three to four months. So we're looking at about six to seven months before the specific tower is on air. One of the questions that was brought up was why did AT&amp;T not construct the two previous applications that were approved in the city? There was one that was approved in 2011, and unfortunately, there was different management within the Westin Resort, and we were unable to come to a compromise with regards to the lease terms that are needed for AT&amp;T to recoup a return on investment on this property. The one that was applied for and approved in 2014 was not constructed because at that time, AT&amp;T was considering a possible merger with T-Mobile, which was shut down by the FCC, but it put a halt on a lot of the projects that were being proposed by AT&amp;T and T-Mobile. So it wasn't that we didn't have enough customers at that time or didn't feel like we needed these towers, but we felt like we had to wait until the timing was right, the budgets were right, and now we have come back with this tower. For the gentleman that just spoke, he mentioned that my two pillars of proof that I need to show that I have a significant gap in coverage, that is only for AT&amp;T. The federal government has mandated that we are competitors, which is why they shut down the possible merger between AT&amp;T and T-Mobile. I do not need to show that there is a significant gap in coverage for all carriers in order to establish a federal prima facie case. I only need to show that AT&amp;T does have a significant gap in coverage. I would also like to say, unfortunately, there are cell towers all over the place. With the increasing demand for technology, there are going to be cellphone towers within a few blocks of residences. We talked about, you know, small cells that are going to be needed because that is the way that technology is going. Nobody has landlines anymore. 75% of Americans have given up their landline, and we need the cellphone coverage in order to promote the public safety. When there is a natural disaster, the problem is that most of our cellphones don't work because so many people are trying to access this one tower, and there's not enough coverage and capacity because of these roadblocks that we hit with the cities. It is mandatory that cities cooperate with AT&amp;T and also with the different carriers so that we can be, we can provide the coverage that the residents of Rancho Mirage need in these times of need, in these times of emergency. There is already a cellphone tower at the Westin Resort. There is a Sprint Tower that is already there. So for the residents that are concerned and wanting to sell their properties now because AT&amp;T is going up there, I'm sorry to inform you, there is already one there. There is also a T-Mobile cell tower that is just a couple blocks away to the south. So again, I greatly appreciate all of your time. Everybody has been extremely helpful and supportive. I urge you to approve this tower. And again, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that have come up.
Comment and response.
Yes.
You and your associate, talk in terms of the delay in getting cellphone coverage is somehow related to factors other than the fact that AT&amp;T and perhaps Verizon, T-Mobile, the rest of them, they made decisions that they weren't economically sound at that time. And so rather than building to an economically unsound situation, you don't, you didn't build sites when you could have, and it creates the problem of, the people are talking about drop calls, all of this. You're catching up because you make more money out of that. And that's kind of a deception that I think the cell companies, cellphone companies have pushed toward the public. It's not that the public had anything to do with it. You could have built them a long time ago. You had them right there on the hotel. You have three other cell towers that have been approved, ready to go. But you didn't build them because it wasn't economically feasible. Instead of saying, we'll build them, and then it'll become economically feasible when people move in and come closer. And so it's kind of a, it's not that it's not appropriate to be profit-minded, but on the other hand, to ignore the responsibility that the companies have for the deficiencies that we're dealing with now, causing people who've built homes now to have something next to their homes that they didn't have before. I mean, that's, you have to take some of the responsibility for that.
I understand and appreciate everything that you have just said, and obviously, my intent is not to be deceptive at all. My mere point is in that saying that there are several different factors that go into the placement and construction of each one of these cell towers. And me, as a consultant for AT&amp;T, I have to take into consideration all of these different factors. But I apologize if I sounded deceptive.
Okay, if I might, I want to thank Dana also for bringing up that point because, you know, we listen to our residents, we listen to our businesses, we want to do the very best we can, we listen to their opinions and their ideas. This is not an issue of whether or not we need better cellphone coverage, but how to best satisfy the needs of all the parties involved and how to provide best satisfy the needs of all the parties involved, and how to provide the best coverage for people's personal lives, their business lives, but most of all, for their emergency needs. And I find it very strange, especially when we hear from the general manager of the Weston Hotel and the general manager of the other complex on that property, that they've lost so much business through all these years. And they could have gotten a lot of this business just by virtue of having better cellphone coverage, and yet decisions were made not to implement it, especially when people couldn't even make emergency phone calls. It seems strange to me. And it seems strange that now, when business looks more profitable, that a decision's made to move forward.
If I may add, AT&amp;T has been working with Tom and the general manager of the Weston Resort. And for big events, we have provided him with what we call a COW, a cell on wheels, that we will take on to the property for larger events in order to help with this coverage.
I understand that, but that's for their events.
I understand.
We're talking about the everyday resident who is living with drop calls and can't get through emergency calls and can't hear from their own doctors. And it's unfortunate that it sounds like, and maybe I'm wrong, but it sounds like the bottom line is that it wasn't profitable enough, even though two cellphone towers were approved, that they were not built just to help the people with their everyday needs.
We're here now. We would like to fix the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to close the public hearing.
I think Isaiah wanted to say something.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I just wanted to provide context to two things. First one, Bud, could the height of the tower increase without re-triggering city approval?
One gentleman brought up the fact that a tower could increase 20 feet without input from the public. That's incorrect. Mr. Quintanilla, there was legislation that was passed in 2014 that I believe regulates change out of equipment, and the maximum height a tower can be increased. And I believe that's five feet, if I'm not mistaken. Could be 10.
I believe it's five.
I do, too.
But it's certainly not 20.
Right.
And then, I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and you heard several of the speakers reference the fact that staff asked them to research a different location, and that was at my request. So after attending the Planning Commission meeting, we heard from a lot of the neighbors that were directly adjacent to this, and there was some concern about the views and the proximity to their homes. So at a staff level, we went back to AT&amp;T and the Weston and just simply asked if they would be willing to voluntarily move the site, kind of out of a good neighbor policy based on some of the concerns that they started to hear during the public hearing process. And so that's what those comments were in reference to, is staff did ask if they would be willing to voluntarily relocate it. And the response that we got was no. They felt it was appropriate, and they wanted to move forward.
Can I make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Dana, you may.
Perhaps we could show it on the screen.
The...
Yeah, this is the motion that I'm going to make. I move that the Rancho Mirage City Council approved conditional use permit case number CUP 18001 based upon the content, findings, and conditions in the staff report and the additional condition that said cell tower shall be positioned on Weston Mission Hills property at least 400 feet distant from the nearest Mission Hills Country Club house. In other words, a house in Mission Hills.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, if I could just have a brief minute here to comment on that, Dana.
Yes.
You know, we really want to thank everybody that came out today on behalf of the cell tower issue, whether you were for or against it. You know, as elected officials, we're really here to hear your concerns, both for and against these items. We need to come up with a solution that is best for the city of Rancho Mirage and its residents. You can see what we're doing. We're trying to look at both sides. All of us really take your comments heart because we feel it's challenging for all of us to get out and try to find out how we can improve things for residents of Rancho Mirage. Move the proposed cell tower might be another solution to continue to look for additional sites might be. But, you know, I think the city of Rancho Mirage has to do something at this point. We can't just continue to postpone the item. You can hear from our residents what their needs are. People are getting frustrated because of the services they're getting. And I think we've really got to move forward, as Dana suggests here, and look for another site, work with the other applicants, and try and resolve the issue on some sort of a compromise. So I think the city has got a motion in front of us, and unless you have other comments...
I'd like to just add one word, or one factor. The proposed location doesn't qualify, in our view, if this passes, because it creates too many problems for existing residents that are already there and have been there for a long time, particularly the houses that are closed. The idea behind this 400-feet distance is not to set a spot, but to allow AT&amp;T to find a spot, working with the Weston, doing what it can to find something. If it's less than 400 feet by a little bit, I'm sure we're more than willing to talk about it. It's to give latitude to both sides with the implied direction to continue to move forward. But if AT&amp;T doesn't want to, if they just say, "Nope, it's us, the highway," then so be it, and we'll start trying to find somebody that is interested. But I think AT&amp;T is interested, and I frankly don't believe that it would be impossible for us to work something out that satisfies, mollifies would be a better word, our residents that it's going to be closest to, and come to a conclusion that produces the coverage that we all want to have and doesn't harm residential property values where the house is closer to the cell tower than it economically should be. So that's my thoughts.
As issues have come to us in the past, we've always looked to see how we could benefit the residents of Rancho Mirage, improve your quality of life. This is another quality of life issue, and we've got to resolve it for all of you. So let's take a vote on this. Iris, do you need to see the motion again? Okay, so vote.
Yeah, please.
Motion carries 3-0.
Mr. Chairman, can I make the next motion, please?
Pardon me?
May I make a second motion, please? Motion number two. In the event that A, AT&amp;T completes the subject tower and it is available for full public use within one year from today's approval, and B, AT&amp;T has secured a lease from a secondary provider to co-locate on the subject facility or submits evidence showing good faith efforts to attract a prominent secondary provider, such as Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, and others, the city of Rancho Mirage will reimburse AT&amp;T or its designee up to $20,000 for design and directly related costs and expenses incurred in connection with relocating from the initial site selection adjacent to Mission Hills Sunningdale Wall. Any costs or expenses claimed must be supported with appropriate documentary invoices and other data supporting the claimed costs and/or expenses.
I'll second the motion. And...
And this, Mr. Chairman, just to explain it, is telling AT&amp;T, "We'll work with you. We'll reimburse some of your costs." I think the lady said at the Planning Commission meeting that it would cost approximately $20,000 to put together the plant that is before us now from AT&amp;T. And so we want to be good sports about it and show a cooperative attitude, and we will reimburse that expense, subject to the content of the motion.
Certainly gives a little incentive, doesn't it, to the all...
I'm not sure that $20,000 gives a whole lot of incentive to AT&amp;T, but although when I'm late in paying one of my bills, they do have incentive to come after me for 20 bucks, so who knows?
Are you ready to vote?
Sure. I would just also thank you all for your efforts, and we are, as a city, very anxious to make things work well for everyone, and we thank you again for coming forth with this.
Please vote.
Motion carries 3-0.
And Dana, you have one more motion?
One final motion. I move that if, within one year from today, the subject tower is not fully constructed and operating, the tower approval granted today will be deemed null and void. And I might say parenthetically that if it were close to being completed, nobody's going to be holding you to a date certain.
Okay. Iris, second for Iris. Please vote.
Motion carries 3-0.
Do you want to, City Manager, you want to talk about the possible way we can facilitate this, maybe through your working with the applicant? Or how would you see us, we would move forward from here?
Maybe Councilmember Hobart can clarify, but since the motion was for approval, it sounds like at the staff level, we would sign off on the new location, subject to that new location, meeting the conditions that were within the council's motion.
Yes, that was implied by me.
So at this point, we would work with the applicant on a one-on-one basis, trying to negotiate a settlement.
So city staff would work with them at the staff level and be able to move very quickly on this, to limit any delays that they could incur because of this relocation.
Okay, thank you.
In other words, it's not coming back to the council for final approval.
Right. Dana, thank you for your hard work on this item.
Thank you, Richard, for your leadership.
Iris, thanks for being here and drawing the long straw. And let's see, are we going to move on to the next item, Steve?
Did we have a vote on the final motion?
I think we did, but you want to redo that? Final motion was that after a year?
Yeah, we voted on that, didn't we?
Thank you for being here, folks, tonight. Appreciate your thoughts and your input.
Just wait just one second. Okay. Okay. Oh, no, we're gonna...
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
We're just going to continue, Richard. So it's going to... This is going to be...
...